Mr. County Executive, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am calling the St. Louis County Council Meeting to Order, Tuesday, August 10, 2021. The hour is 6:30 p.m. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
States of America, which in the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Daye.
I think that was me, right? Aye, or here.
I don't know what you said.
Okay. Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of July 27, 2021?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The July 27, 2021 Journal is approved. The August 30, 2021 Journal has not been finalized as yet. The voting order for this evening will be E. Tracus, Days, Webb, Clancy, Harder, Dunaway, and Fitch. Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to suspend the rules for the adoption and presentation of a resolution honoring the 15th anniversary of William C. Harris Funeral Director.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The rules are suspended.
Would you please read the resolution, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution number two this evening introduced by Councilmembers Webb and Days. Resolution, whereas William C. Harris Jr. began his career...
I'm gonna go down, excuse me. I'm gonna ask the guest who wanted to please stand before you read the resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you gentlemen please stand and join me at the front of the conference, please?
Madam Chair, continuing with Resolution Number Two this evening introduced by Councilmembers Webb and Days. Resolution, whereas William C. Harris Jr. began his career in the funeral business in 1977 when, at the age of 12, he answered phones and washed cars at Ellis Funeral Home in St. Louis. And whereas Mr. Harris graduated from University City High School in 1983 and became a licensed funeral director at the age of 18. And whereas the first location of William C. Harris Funeral Directors was established on July 19, 2006, at 9825 Halls Ferry Road in St. Louis County. And whereas, while a fire at the original location in January 2017 would have caused some people to throw in the towel, Mr. Harris' desire and calling to serve people, along with the biblical quote from Isaiah 54:17 of, "No weapon formed against me shall prosper," allowed him to instead use the opportunity to expand his business. And whereas, William C. Harris Funeral Directors now has four locations, three of which are located in St. Louis County, employing more than 25 people. And whereas, after years of severe neglect by the previous owner, in 2016, William C. Harris Funeral Directors took ownership of Oak Grove Cemetery, restoring and maintaining the grounds and resting place in a manner that respects the loved ones resting there. And whereas, Mr. Harris gives back to community by sponsoring numerous projects, including distribution of food in 2020 during the COVID-19 pandemic, and providing back-to-school supplies and haircuts to school-aged children. And whereas, when a business owner in St. Louis County has worked so diligently for the betterment of the community, is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis County and supplants and take note. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section One, County Council congratulates Mr. William C. Harris Jr. on the occasion of the 15th anniversary of William C. Harris Funeral Directors and expresses its deepest gratitude to Mr. Harris for his contributions to our community. Section Two, the Administrative Director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Mr. William C. Harris Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And I would like to take this time...
Madam Chair, we need to vote first on the resolution. We have to take a roll. Madam Chair, we have to take a roll call. I need a motion and a second.
All right, we need a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye. I thought we were starting with E. Tracus.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number Two, there are seven ayes.
Thank you very much. Resolution Number Two is adopted. I'm done.
Please welcome and congratulate William C. Harris Funeral Director. Madam Chair, before the presentation to Mr. Harris, I just want to make sure that everybody recognizes this pillar in the North County community. They have been priceless and most valuable in our community through some of the toughest times. When there was no cameras looking, when there was no accolades, they took care of our community. I joined them with disseminating food during some of the hard times during this pandemic. But they've also always been there, whether, like they said, giving haircuts to the youth to make sure that our children were taken care of and to ensure that the people of North County had a good, strong pillar that they can always depend on in a time that you're most vulnerable. William C. Harris took care of us and our loved ones. So without further ado, Madam Chair, I want to present this resolution to Mr. Harris, thanking him so much for all of his contributions to his staff that worked diligently with the level of excellence that we all are always proud of. Thank you so much, sir. Do you want to... Thank you so much.
I do want to make one quick comment right quick, and that is to all of you all on the St. Louis County Council, I greatly appreciate this honor. I wasn't expecting it, but I do appreciate it. And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive and file, the same motion will apply to number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to item number four, and that will be the order.
Item number five, First, Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number six, First and Fourth Districts.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, Fifth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number nine, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 10.
Receive... Oh, I'm sorry. We have a problem with this. Are we on number 10? Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to item number 18, and that will be the order. Same motion through item number 18. Okay?
Moving on to item 19, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 20, Second, Fourth, Sixth, and Seventh Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item 21, Sixth District.
Receive, file, contract an amount not to exceed $172,154.14. Be approved and awarded to Gerschner Electric Incorporated, the lowest responsive bidder, as recommended. Authorization for revision of the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Moving to add-ons, Madam Chair. Item number one, First District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Fifth District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Director of Information Technology.
So ordered.
Item number four, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Moving on to public forum. Ladies and gentlemen, we have about 58, I believe, 58 speakers this evening. With the indulgence of the other members of the council, I would suggest that we expand the public forum to two hours. Is there any discussion? That's what will be. We will have the public forum will now be two hours. Upon entrance, ladies and gentlemen, you were given some information about the decorum of the council and the meetings. We are excited to have you to come and give your opinions and concerns to us. We do appreciate that. Please, when you come, give us your first name, last name, and your zip code for the record. And you will have three minutes to give us your information. With that, I believe we are ready for our first speaker. Mr. Clerk?
Our first speaker this evening, Madam Chair, is Mackenzie McNamara, followed by Julie Bernstein.
What did you need from me when I come up here? My name and zip code? I'm Dr. Mackenzie McNamara. I'm in 63367. Now I just moved to Lake St. Louis. I'm a doctor of chiropractic business owner, mother, and international speaker on health and wellness. We're now 83-plus weeks into two weeks to flatten the curve. Something is wrong here. For a virus with a 99-plus percent recovery rate in most of the population, something's wrong here. Forced masks that aren't effective in blocking particles smaller than 100 microns, and the COVID-19 particle is 0.125 micron small. Something is wrong here. The COVID-19 virus has never been isolated in a lab. In a recent court case in Alberta, Canada, the Health Minister was unable to provide evidence of the existence of the COVID-19 virus, and the case was dropped against the citizen. Something's wrong here. Mr. Khan's amendment to the county health policy stating after three months from your last dose, you are no longer considered a fully vaccinated person. Something is wrong here. Despite mass censorship and the fear-mongering, mockingbird media, we, the people, are intelligent enough to see what's happening. This is not about health. This is not about controlling a virus, which you cannot do, by the way. This is an attempt to control the people. There's a clear agenda to promote a dystopian techno-medical dictatorship, a one-world government spoken about by every president since Bush Senior, the Rockefellers, the Bilderberg Group, Bill Gates, global leaders, and warned against by JFK shortly before his assassination. The Nuremberg Trials held after the atrocities of World War II created a code of foundational medical ethics, requiring informed consent and refusal, that no one may be coerced to participate in a medical experiment. Yet here we are, being coerced, jobs threatened, and having our papers checked. There's something wrong here. The vaccine is under emergency use authorization only. It's experimental, period. It has been shown to be more deadly and have more adverse events than any vaccine in the history of the vaccination program in this country ever, and it's only six months long. It's also demonstrated antibody-mediated viral enhancement. That's a condition that's occurred after every SARS coronavirus vaccine in animal studies, and why it's never been used in humans before. The vaccine causes the immune system to react in an unusual way, making the virus worse than it would be in a native infection, spreading through vaccinated individuals, hence an outbreak in the middle of the summer when vitamin D levels are the highest, which a natural occurring respiratory virus does not do. There's something wrong here. This is not a false dark web talking point, Mr. Page. This is basic science. These mandates and ordinances are in direct violation of the Nuremberg Code, the Constitution you've sworn to protect, and federal law. If I don't have sovereignty over my body, what does that make me? It starts with an S. What does that make my children? Councilpeople, will you be personally responsible for allowing the installation of draconian policies that will end freedom as we know it for our children, grandchildren, and yours? Or will you stand with us, for us, and for the freedom you vow to protect? We are a free people. Tyranny will not be tolerated, not now, not ever, and we will not comply. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Doctor, can I ask you a question?
You have to...
Can I ask the doctor a question, please?
One second. You have to be quiet so that we can hear. Thank you.
Is it Dr. McKenna?
I'm sorry.
Your last name?
McNamara.
McNamara. Dr. McNamara, I'm sorry. I just have a question. I want to make sure I understood what you were saying. Did I understand correctly that your position or your opinion is that masks that most people wear, cloth masks or the surgical masks, don't do not provide sufficient protection or prevention?
That is my opinion, yes.
What about N95 masks?
That's a little bit different. They have a different particle size that gets through.
And so would N95s be effective?
I'd have to look at the data. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. But at least your opinion tonight, as you gave it, as I understand it, is that, other than N95, which we're not going to pine about, your opinion is that masks that most people wear do not prevent the spread of the virus or protect from infection?
They do not prevent the aerosol spread from, if it's in spit or saliva or spray from somebody sneezing, for example, that would block those particles in the spit or the mucus that would come through. But aerosol, as far as our breathing, it does not prevent, based on particle size, the virus from...
Okay, thank you.
Transmitting, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our next speaker is Julie Bernstein, followed by Xena Hackworth.
Here we go. All right. Because of these childish games, Sam Page, and your lapdog cronies have caused me loss, sleep, mental agnes, time, money, gas in my car for me to come down here and fight for our rights week after week. I'm speaking tonight to make sure Sam Page and your lapdog cronies don't impose forthright medical tyranny against our freedoms. The main reason we have COVID and the Delta variant is the fault of the federal government. Gang of function, Chinese lab research, and the virus they have let in on the USA. It's not right to make the people of this country suffer for their negligence and of the federal government. States that had the highest vaccine rates also have the highest infection rate. The push for mask mandates, vaccines, and open borders have triggered the Delta variant. Masks don't work, and vaccines don't work, but there are doctors who can prove the fact. The fact that the masks and the vaccines are making people sicker than ever. I take their word over the news media. Even the designer of the mRNA vaccine will tell you it has high protein spikes that have a high rate of serious side effects and even death. Also, they're not FDA-approved, and we do not know the long-term side effects. We do have the right to consent under the Neubauer Code. They're forcing us to do so would violate the Neubauer Code and trials. You have no authority to enforce such lockdowns, force us to mask up and take untested deadly mystery mRNA vaccines and impose forthright vaccine passports and the Declaration of Independence states, "We, the people, have the right to life, liberty, property, and the pursuit of happiness under our God-given rights." Sam Page, you and your communist camp of lapdogs act like three- and four-year-old childish brats who run around like you're in a preschool, playing the "na, na, 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 you have cooties" game. If you behave like a three- or four-year-old brat, you need to be treated as such and placed in a daycare center. Grow the hell up and act like mature adults, because you represent we, the people. We pay your salary, and you do what we say. Any attempt to do so of violating any of our allowable rights are crimes against humanity, and you will be required to step down effective immediately. You took an oath to uphold our Constitution, to defend our liberties and freedom, and you're not meeting that obligation. We, the people of St. Louis County, demand Sam Page and his traitors, who are committing crimes against humanity, to rescind this, resign effective immediately. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Xena Hackworth, followed by Mark McCloskey.
Xena Hackworth, 63129. Thank you, Madam Chair. The CDC's mask policies, I've looked through almost every day. There are no mask mandates under the CDC. They have guidelines and recommendations. So what we ask of this council is that we hired you not to tell us what to do, but to give us guidelines, recommendations, and facts, not fear, not mandates, and not manipulations. Because we are able to make decisions for ourselves and for our families. I saw a letter that Lisa Clancy sent to Chairwoman Days. And she, at the end of that letter, made a decision to stay at home to protect her family. She has that right. But we, as citizens, we have the right to make the decisions for our families that are best for us. So for her to say that she can have the right to make decisions for her families and for herself, but that we can't, I think is unconstitutional. I just wanted to read two excerpts from the Declaration of Independence. One is, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inerrable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to initiate new government." And then the next part is this. Let me see how much time I have. "But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same objective..." Excuse me. "The same objective..." Excuse me. "The same object evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right," meaning the people, we, the people, "it is their duty to throw off such governments and to provide new guards for their future security." So for those who like to, who want to kind of usurp our rights as individuals, Sam Page, Lisa Clancy, it is the right of the people to get rid of you and to have new guards, because we can think for ourselves, we can make decisions for our families, for ourselves. You are to protect our constitutional rights. Please take an hour to read the Constitution again so that you know where your limits are and where they stop. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our next speaker is Mark McCloskey, followed by Stephen Perry.
My name is Mark McCloskey. My zip code is 63108. I see that the county executive Sam Page is not here tonight. He's also not wearing that ridiculous piece of cloth he has over his face when he sits up in his chair. He knows, as a medical doctor, that that ridiculous piece of cloth would not protect him or his patients. If he went into the operating room as an anesthesiologist, wearing that ridiculous piece of cloth, he'd be tossed out on his rear end, and he knows it. When he tries to impose that upon a free people, he knows he's lying. He's only doing it to control the population, to teach us to be sheep. When you remove reason from rule, you can rule anything. This is a free country. We are adult human beings. We have that Declaration of Independence. We have a government by consent to govern, and it is time to pull that consent back. We have a President of the United States who expands an eviction moratorium, announcing that he knows it's unconstitutional, but he's going to do it anyway. We have a county executive... going to do it anyway we have a county executive who despite his knowledge that the legislature has given this body the power to rescind his health mandates sit in this chamber watch the council vote persistent pursuant to that statute vote down his mask mandate and then the next morning stand up in his backyard wearing once again that ridiculous piece of cloth take it off his face tell us he doesn't care about the law the law doesn't apply to him then in order to protect his trees and his grass from his virus he puts his mask back on and walks back towards his house that's how realistic this thing is the county executive and the county council members in exile on that television screen aren't afraid of a virus but they're very afraid of a very visible population it's time for each and every one of us to take personal responsibility for our own freedom to stand up and say we will not be sheep we will be a free people and we will not consent and we will not comply thank you ladies
our next speaker is Stephanie Perry followed by Alicia Beatty
thank you for this opportunity to speak Stephanie Perry 63021 March 24 2020 I lost my job that took me three years to get a base plus commission job where my earning potential was partly determined by my ability to attend in-person networking meetings and events but as we've learned in the past year and a half Paige and Clancy's drive to maintain reckless authority is more important than my freedom to earn a living as I did the previous 30 years I was briefly thrown pittance like a peasant for my troubles when Paige shut us down March 20th he told us we could we should stay home but we are allowed to go for a walk in a park okay shortly afterward he closed the parks I want to know how many yards of crime scene tape was used to wrap around the parks to keep us out this move bothered me almost as much as losing my jobs job because it was such a draconian gesture and a clear statement that we would be here for the long haul hashtag power trip that seems like a lifetime ago so fast forward to now since Tuesday July 27 county council meeting the media has portrayed us as quote little better than an unruly mob unquote the media portrayal in addition to Khan's lying about his verbal and physical treatment and Lisa Clancy's attempt to get us removed by law enforcement during Monday August 2nd meeting is dangerous when we weren't successfully removed from chambers Clancy closed out her Zoom connection that was her con middle finger to us if the media and some members of this council portrayed the scenario accurately Khan was more offended that he was called out on his credentials or lack thereof but guess what I mere peasant sometimes have to complete an extensive personality profile test before I even get the job interview Paige and Clancy's reckless authority and rhetoric is going to get one or more of us hurt I'm starting to believe that that would be okay with them I'm starting to believe that they are internally cheering the current modern day segregation practices when you consider black and Hispanic injection rates I assume diversity and inclusion is a dead practice I'm tired of the revolving rule change today if I want to see a concert I have to show papers of injection or a negative test segregation is replacing shutdowns McConnell's Pub's social media says it's okay that I order their food as long as I don't dine inside really a year ago they were begging me to donate money to keep them alive McConnell's deleted and blocked those of us who verbally protested I believe if you make a statement like that on social media you better be ready willing to defend it and I'll dine at home for the rest of my life before I mention their name again
our next speaker is Alicia Beatty followed by Renee Artman
hi my name is Alicia Beatty 63137 I'm up here uncomfortably due to some lack of representation for North County I don't hear a lot of those zip codes up here I have absolutely zero faith in politics in fact I rarely participate seeing Sam Page continue the way he does confirms these feelings 100% Shalonda Webb had restored a small amount of hope for North County and heard those 11 emails and had the courage to perform her role adequately even in the face of uncertain circumstances what the entire world has what the entire world has expected nurses to do for the last year and a half when my patient declines a procedure evaluation or even declines a blood transfusion in a life-saving emergency I'm required to respect that my job is to advocate for my patient and at the start of covid I was working on the floor in a St Louis hospital we started out and are trained to religiously discard our masks after entering each room then we are saving one mask per day even in the operating room then we went to three days of using the same mask and then we could wear any masks we wanted and then unlimited amount of masks it was obscene and nobody really knew what they were doing they still don't i.e. Councilwoman Dunaway fondling her mask probably 50 times in one sitting after touching hundreds of surfaces represents a clear lack of guidance and understanding our society now holds regarding disease prevention I've watched my neighbors panic and wear shower curtains as capes scuba gear plastic bags literally covering their heads plastic gloves worn all over god knows where I have walked more confidently into an active tuberculosis room with less of a barrier because hashtag science introducing this ordinance promotes more confusion and frustration in the community can we stop disrespecting our community's intellectual capacity to make their own choice my neighbors and I know our resources we know where to find vaccines and have formed our own masking habits and beliefs after an entire year now there are signs literally on every block of my community and the amount of medical and pharmaceutical advertising is tenfold at my house compared to my mother's in St Peters it is disgusting the turbulence created by these mandates are pushing businesses to play societal martyrs when it's not their job O'Connell's on Shaw referred to unvaccinated individuals as uncivilized and therefore unwelcome STL Corona states in their definition section that a person is no longer considered a fully vaccinated person three months from the last dose are you okay rolling up your sleeves every three months people please why is this okay I am not uncivilized I'm not uneducated and I am not alone I'm a registered nurse I'm a mother of four children including a four month old baby supporting these mandates is abuse and manipulation to vulnerable populations everywhere thank you
our next speaker is Renee Artman followed by Shannon Cox
good evening and thank you for once again allowing me to give me this opportunity to speak I still have a problem with acting director Dr Khan and I don't think it's going to go away anytime soon county executive page at the last week's meeting stated that he believes everything Mr Khan has told us about the events that went on on July 27th in short county executive you are calling those out who were here to testify to tell you what we seen or didn't seen to show the videos that didn't show anything and when the police gave reports of things that didn't happen I feel that you've all called us a liar councilman Clancy in a letter dated August 3rd the honorable to the honorable Chairwoman Days responsibility to treat each other with respect and dignity because she believes that is what she deserves she also stated that the county council persons must lead by example I certainly hope that you take those words to heart and begin to practice what you preach because when you call a colleague a bully and a fool that does not lead to good leadership examples also in the letter she stated that she would not be attending any council meetings in the chamber until it was made safe because she has young children and yet on or around June 28 when religious leaders got together in St Louis County to show support for acting director Khan councilwoman Clancy was in attendance with her young child I believe that we are in the lowest point in history for St Louis County mandates for vaccines mandates for masks that they I did that wrong mandates for masks mandates for a vaccine that has not yet received approval if we are required to carry a card to show proof of vaccination to gain access for merely shopping dining or freely moving abroad then this is no longer a free country and everyone should be concerned for a country who has killed an entire generation in the womb but tells adults to wear masks to save lives your words are a joke and an embarrassment this evening I am asking the reasonable members of this county council to draft a resolution of no confidence on behalf of the citizens of St Louis County pertaining to the leadership of county executive page and acting director Faisal Khan during this covid pandemic their leadership that they have exhibited is basically none the one thing that the government most fears is the day when citizens stands together and today is that day thank you
our next speaker is Shannon Cox followed by Megan Hagan
hi my name is Shannon Cox 63011 and I am just here to announce to everyone in this room and watching online that there is an official Sam Page recall and if you want to sign that find us at Recall Sam Page on Facebook
our next speaker is Megan Hagan followed by Katie Geary
good evening council members and Madam Chair I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen and is deeply troubled by the newly proposed mask ordinance but even more troubled by the proposed ordinance requiring county employees to be to submit to covid-19 injections or risk losing their jobs I've emailed the council just some of the research that does not support the policy of mass masking or forced vaccinations I hope you have a chance at some point to review the materials I would also like to highlight something I do not think has received enough attention too many of us have been arguing that these injections are not FDA approved as if that is the only rubric that should determine if someone takes a medication or biologic allow me to give you a non exhaustive list of medications that were once deemed safe and effective by the FDA and were later pulled from the market I apologize in advance for butchering these names Accutane Bacal Bextra Sylar Darvon and Darvacet DBI DES Durac Ergamisol Hisminol Latrinex Meridia Meritol Aliva Micturin Mydlogard Omnaflox Palladone Permax Ponamyn Postacor Propilicit PTZ Metrazol Quelud Rapon Raptiva Rexar Redux Resolin Celadine Trazolol Bioc Xirix Zelmid and Zelnorm many of these medications spent years on the market some up to 55 years before they were pulled and they're cumulatively thought to be responsible for innumerable numerous birth defects serious injuries and thousands and thousands of deaths so just from this list we know there are medications that can cause serious harm or death that the FDA has in the past deemed safe and effective and they were wrong now in the past we've studied vaccines for about six to seven years longer or longer and tested them on thousands of people and still approve vaccines that cause serious injury and death case in point Rotashield the first vaccine for rotavirus was withdrawn from the market in 1999 despite being tested on more than 10,000 patients post-marketing surveillance demonstrated a rare and serious risk of its subduction excuse me which is where your bowels telescope in on themselves again this was a vaccine tested for years on thousands of people not in the middle of a pandemic not under immense political pressure to fast track a vaccine and still are FDA approved on a vaccine that was later pulled due to causing serious injury there are risks with any medication or medical intervention that is why there must always be informed choice it is not now nor will ever be the county council or any government agency's job to mandate what something someone puts in their body no one should be bribed threatened bullied or coerced into taking medication telling someone they must take a medication or they will not be able to provide for themselves is coercion and forcing someone to take an ejection against their will is medical rape you are entering someone's body without their consent as of 2019 there were more than 240 vaccines in development you and I and many others will not consent to some of those which is why we must protect our rights for informed choice and Councilman Trackas I have looked into N95 masks if they are not fitted they're ineffective and if they have a vent they allow all of your exhaled particles to come out just so you know
our next speaker is Katie Geary followed by Jessica Moran
hi nice to see you guys again Katie Geary 63128 I would like to spend my Tuesday nights at home though so hopefully we can put an end to this okay so Xena and I were on the same track here is a language that the CDC and the World Health Organization uses on its websites regarding covid-19 I thought it would be helpful to define this evening recommend which means to advise or suggest a course of action guidance which means advice or information aimed at resolving a problem or difficulty especially as given by someone in authority neither of these entities use the word mandate and they do not use the word ordinance which is a piece of legislation neither instruct you to make laws impose fines or jail time why Ms Clancy are you going above and beyond what our national and international health organizations are advising why Ms Clancy do you believe that you know better for us than we know for ourselves council I ask that you would vote no on Ms Clancy's outrageous overreach now Ms Webb I have to talk to you about this vaccine mandate that you're requiring for county employees and contractors I would like to remind you guys last week that I asked us to start using terms like immunity for discussion about public health vaccination is only one form of immunity and to fail to regularly communicate that natural immunity is the standard that vaccinated immunity is trying to achieve harms our community according to the US Department of Health and Human Services the immune systems of more than 95% of people who recovered from covid-19 had durable memories of the virus up to eight months after they recovered these results also from the same source results provide hope that people receiving the covid vaccinations will develop similar lasting immunities after vaccination so did you catch that the hope is that vaccinated individuals will have lasting immunities like I have who have already recovered from the virus so no matter how you look at it nearly 50% of people in St Louis County have been vaccinated and at least 10% of us have natural immunity that 10% figure is from St Louis Corona and it doesn't include many individuals who chose not to get tested so worst case scenario here that I see is we've got 60% of the St Louis County population immune from covid-19 why would we consider vaccine mandates or mask ordinances at this point one last thing how is the investigation into Dr Khan's actions coming along
next speaker is Jessica Moran followed by Sarah Larson
good evening I'm Jessica Moran and my zip code is 63125 dear council members so much of this year has already been stolen by covid mandates not covid my family had covid and it took about a week and a half of our lives however the mandates have caused undue harm for over a year such as my daughter's anxiety my son's depression and the loss of my job mandates have threatened celebrations holidays education extracurricular activities and now employment honestly I'm done with them and the people putting them in place I participated in the campaign to have HB271 signed into law I was also at the Tuesday July 27 meeting to bring awareness that the law had been broken by Sam Page as you are aware Page has played the role of dictator with his draconian orders the 5-2 vote that took place on Tuesday evening leads me to believe that you feel the same way in doing so I would ask that you do not play Sam and do not do the same to us don't assume that you know what is best and force others to mask vaccinate shut down etc just as we fought for HB271 because we didn't like that Page and others dismissed the council's decisions or votes or when Page and councilman councilwoman Clancy tried to stop Webb's vote on the chair position because they felt like they knew what was best for others I would ask that you do not do the same please do not force or threaten others into either getting something injected into their bodies or lose their job or be subjected to constant scrutiny through testing the people I know have refused or decided to wait on this vaccine have done so with much research and consideration they are not selfish or ill-informed or conspiracy theorist the wonderful thing about informed consent is two people with the same information can make two differently two completely different choices and neither of them is right or wrong that is what medical freedom should be there are benefits and risks to every medical decision doing the right thing means you weigh the risk and benefits for yourself the only wrong decision is made purely out of fear social pressure emotional reactivity and a coarse force I don't want my neighbors to be marked segregated or discriminated against for their personal medical decisions I recently heard someone describe power as the ability to reward people that are in line with your interests and punish people with your interests and punish people who do not. Let's not be people of power, but people that support freedom and choice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Larson, followed by Randy Larson.
Hi, I'm Jessica. Hi, I'm Sarah Larson from 63122, and it's kind of crazy that I'm standing here, you guys, because I hate public speaking, like hate it. And I am a shy person, but I have been provoked. You guys have done it, like you've provoked me, and you're messing with our liberty and you're messing with our children. So first, I just want to remind you of your duty and primary responsibility to secure the blessings of liberty as stated by the preamble. The Constitution was never created as a mantle to rest constraint over the governed, but rather to demand constraint on those that govern. So may I remind you, you are deriving your just powers from the consent of the governed. And if you do not frequent this glorious document, one of the most beautiful documents ever written, read it often, please. The most impactful and effective leadership is most beautifully illustrated not in the power it exerts, but in the restraint it displays. This is overtly articulated and intentioned by our founders as a direct reaction to the tyranny they fought to escape. So there are tyrants and cowards who implement the base motivation of coercion through force, penalty and fear, and there are others who deploy their powers of persuasion, which can be effective, but the highest and the purest form of motivation is instilled through the beauty of inspiration. So in 1984, when Ronald Reagan achieved a historical landslide victory of 49-state sweep because he inspired the common man. And in 1941, after an unprovoked attack on Pearl Harbor, the U.S. joined the fight against the Axis Powers' attempt at global domination, my grandfather at 19 did not need to be persuaded to enlist or coerced to enlist. He was inspired. So be better, do better. Inspiration draws on love while coercion is rooted in fear, and 2020 rode the wings of fear perpetuated by our leaders, politicians and media. Be better and do better. It is not COVID that has damaged us most, it is the incessant narratives constructed with the intended purpose of dividing, and our culture has been trained by its leaders to live out of cognitive dissonance through labeling and catastrophizing and the promulgation of unending logical fallacies and false psych economies that lead to the dehumanization of people who don't share the same beliefs as you. So your mandates and your lockdowns that are authoritarian and infantilizing, your propaganda, they've decimated communities, they've decimated churches, they've decimated schools and jobs and relationships and families, please stop. Last week's complete indifference and disgust by our county executive and some council members has further confirmed to the people the inadequacies of their disappointing leadership and to Councilwoman Clancy and denouement to Sam Page, like you are humans and I love you. Like I don't have any ill will for you, but you are unfit to lead.
Our next speaker is Randy Larson, followed by Louise Kingsbury.
Randy Larson, 63122. Now you guys can see why I have five kids, smoking hot. I did a undergraduate degree in Los Angeles, then a master's in philosophy, then I went to Wash U for law school, and then an LLM in taxation from law school, and finally a certified financial planning designation before finally ending my 12 years in school. I'm not saying I'm sophisticated enough to go to Obama's parties maskless, but I'm not a deplorable from Clinton, and I represent a large group of people that I talk with that I want you guys to hear just a little bit about. I actually don't have a prepared speech. I heard about this meeting about an hour and a half ago and had an opening in my schedule, but I just, as a father of five kids between the ages of five and 17, and as a resident of Kirkwood, we have a home that backs up to Powder Valley Nature Center, I want you guys to just hear a little bit about what I'm hearing on the streets, and it's pretty simple. Please get out of my life. Ms. Councilwoman Clancy, please, if I can have your attention, I don't know if you can hear us. I'm not, I'm seriously, I'm not calling you out because I'm embarrassing you. I actually disagree with probably half the people in the room with how they've been disrespectful towards you. I am trying to win you right now and tell you I have children. I am here for one reason. It is because we don't know the research with how these masks affect the kids. What we do know is that there are about 250 kids that were actually hospitalized between the ages of five and 17 last week, and this is a Wall Street Journal article that you'd be happy to look at that was written two days ago, written by a Johns Hopkins physician. It's a great article on point here. And but what we do know is that there is a whole host of data that's been paid for by the NIH, probably $40 billion. Less than 2% of that went to actually study this coronavirus, and less than 0% of that went to study the effects of masks on the kids. And what I do know is that our kids are going onto school buses at 8:15 in the morning. We don't see them until 4:15 in the night, and they've been wearing masks all day long without seeing the facial expressions of their teachers. They would alert them to different types of body language, which I studied in communication. 90% of it is through nonverbal, and a lot of that is through your face, which you don't know how that affects. Masks for one day, masks for one, one couple hours going to Walmart, that's one thing, but telling our kids they wear it from morning to night, that's why I'm here. So again, I can't tell if you're paying attention, and I'm not trying to call you out. I'm serious, I'm not, I mean, here in my heart, I'm seriously not trying to call you out, but for a long time, Mr. Page, Dr. Page, Ms. Clancy and anybody else that disagrees with what we're saying, please let us parent our children and get out of our lives. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Louise Kingsbury, followed by William Hermanson.
Louise Kingsbury, 63011. A shopkeeper in England filled a fishbowl with clear water and nothing else. He put it in his shop window with a sign, "Transparent Dragon Fighting Fish." Shortly, a crowd gathered to stare at the bowl. A man shouted, "Look, the fish are fighting." Another, "You can see the ripples in the water." Others agreed. They wanted to buy the fish. The owner just wanted to attract attention to his shop and said they were not for sale. The crowd insisted, so he told them the truth. They didn't like his answer. It was an insult to their intelligence, being told what they thought they saw with their own eyes didn't even exist. They were insistent on buying their own mental misconceptions. This council has a moral responsibility to first provide proof that COVID-19 and its supposed variant actually exists, proof that the hospitals are full with COVID. No isolation of the virus has ever been produced. How can seven people charged with truly representing this county seriously consider forcing people to mask or vaccinate against something that cannot be proven to exist? Recall the transparent fish. Medical experts and governments around the world are now admitting there is no virus, there is no isolate. Have people died? Yes. Have they died from COVID or from the flu, from which hundreds of thousands have died every year? No flu deaths this year. Why aren't you questioning that? Not one normal test or process to produce and isolate a virus has ever been done for COVID, and you want to mask and vaccinate people against this transparent fighting fish? Dr. David Scott, trained in immunology, states everything recommended by the CDC is contrary to all the rules of science. All respiratory viruses spread in aerosol particles, by aerosol particles small enough to go through absolutely any mask, and there is a plethora of literature to support this. Three studies are sponsored by the NIH. He states, "No one can make respiratory viruses go away. We have lived with them all our lives. Why are we, you, doing things never done for the common cold or the flu?" The PCR test was taken from a gene bank to mimic rather than find a real virus. The PCR test looks for evidence of a cold or flu at some point in one's life, the reason for 40-plus cycles rather than the normal 25, resulting in millions of false positives. The FDA recently, recently refused to approve the PCR test. So how is it even possible to test for a Delta variant, never isolated? A PCR test doesn't work, and no new test for a new variant. How can there be a Delta variant if there's no proof of it? It's impossible to have a variant from something that cannot be proven to exist, and we should not be masked or vaccinated against something not proven to exist. The people in this audience have done their research. Have you? I implore you to vote no.
Our next speaker is William Hermanson, followed by Christina Bracy.
My name is William Hermanson, 63011. A previous speaker mentioned that America entered World War II after the attack by the Japanese on Pearl Harbor. The man in charge of the entire operation was Admiral Isoroku Yamamoto. When he got word that the attack had been successful, he famously wrote in his diary, "I fear all we have done is to awaken a sleeping giant and fill him with terrible resolve." The pilot who led the attack, Mitsuo Fuchida, would miraculously, miraculously survive the war, convert to Christianity, and he and his children became U.S. citizens. His reconciliation many years later with a Pearl Harbor survivor was stirring in its demonstration of how good ultimately triumphs. The totality of corruption in our government, media, big tech and other institutions, and the recent militarized health initiatives constituting institutional murder have served to finally awaken the sleeping giant again. The attacks on our rights finally reached the level of an invasion by a foreign state, and more and more citizens every day are being filled with a terrible resolve to restore our original republic that has been stolen from us slowly over the years. The extent and intensity of that terrible resolve is just coming to the surface. Look at those of us who have never been in front of you before this year. We will hold our public servants to the standard of protecting our inalienable rights of life, liberty and property. If they do, we will support and respect them. If they do not, we will replace them. Republican or Democrat labels no more matter. There will only be patriots and those who stand in the way. We will be united in one cause, the restoration of the greatest government ever conceived, the Republic of America. We are engaged in a battle of information, and we will not always win. There have already been numerous casualties, economic, social and physical, but once ignited, that terrible resolve will only grow more consuming and will not abate until the war is finally won. We will not comply with unconstitutional laws. We will not comply with our rights being stolen or repressed. George Washington lost every battle until when almost all hope was given up the day after Christmas in 1776. He won at Trenton. Then he never lost again. Our resolve is sure, we have models and a history we can emulate.
Our next speaker is Christina Bracy, followed by Jessica Crandall.
My name is Christina Bracy, 63139. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. The Pledge of Allegiance says liberty, and I'm here just for that, liberty. I believe that everyone is responsible for their own health, and everyone's health needs are different. My husband died today, seven years ago, because of a heart condition he was born with. My 21-year-old son was also born with a heart condition, and I did everything society told me to do with him. In turn, he developed autism after the MMR vaccine, and because of the link to heart issues, I will not have him vaccinated against COVID, which, if it becomes a mandatory vaccine, will further have him discriminated against now for more jobs, not only because of his autism, but because of his personal health decision that will benefit him. I don't look to others to wear a mask or to get shots to protect my son or my eight-year-old daughter. I teach my kids how to protect themselves to make sure their immune system is functioning at 100% through clean eating, probiotics, chiropractic care, acupuncture, holistic remedies, essential oils that, if used correctly, can, have shown can be just as effective as antibiotics. My question has always been, if people are so focused on keeping each other safe and healthy and state and government is involved, where's the line drawn? Can I come into your homes and go through your cabinets, throw out all of your chips and juice? Where's the mandate to have all the sugar, soda and junk food banned from being sold in all schools and establishments? Where's the mandate to shut down fast food restaurants and force everyone to drink only water, exercise daily, take vitamins, eat only non-processed foods? The focus should be more on educating people on immune system function and response, and I hope, as a mother to a vaccine-injured child, that anyone who supports the mask or any mandatory vaccine, that you are also donating both your time and disposable income to individuals and families who took one for the team and passed away or developed long-term vaccine injuries like my son. COVID doesn't scare me. Losing medical rights, being discriminated against for health decisions or bringing back segregation, vaccine versus not vaccine establishments, water fountains, schools, that's what scares me. Do you have, do you have any idea how many indispensable healthcare workers are being forced to lose their jobs behind this? Hit the shot, you could still get it. Wear the mask, you could still get it. The way it sands, you cannot sue a vaccine manufacturer if you are injured or killed by a vaccine. It's a money game, which is why medical doctors won't suggest a probiotic or a chiropractic adjustment, but they'll send you a new drug on the market with endless side effects. It's a money trail, and money talks, but intelligence is the enemy of oppression, and I refuse to live a comfortable, numb, conformist life of mediocrity and ignorance. Medical experimentation should be a choice, so make your choice, but just remember the vaccine industry is more than happy to reinsert you into the matrix where you can happily live out your life under the false illusion that you're being taken care of.
Our next speaker is Jessica Crandall, followed by Haley Walton.
Hello, my name is Jessica Crandall, and I am in zip code 63122. I hold a bachelor's degree in human environmental studies with an emphasis in child development. I work for Special School District of St. Louis County, and I believe that everyone has been given a voice. I believe that my voice has been given to me to speak for those who are unable or are too afraid to speak out. Social-emotional development is an integrative process through which children acquire the capacity to understand, experience, express and manage emotions, as well as develop meaningful relationships with others. How is any of this possible with a mask? Many of the students in my classroom have autism, social-emotional delays, have endured different traumatic events, and many have speech and language delays as well. Quite a few of my students are nonverbal or speak very quietly. Imagine adding a mask. Some of my students have different degrees of medical issues, and seeing adults in masks is scary and causes anxiety. Wearing a mask has actually triggered many of my students into an emotional breakdown. They are looking for comforting eyes, a calm, soothing voice, and many times a hug. You add a mask and social distancing, and you get none of those things. The end result, more fear, which adds to what? More trauma. Our kids have been through enough. We have had enough. Remember your first school experience, a giant building you could only imagine getting lost in, new people, new friends, your first time away from your parents or caregiver? It was a little scary, wasn't it? But you knew it would be okay because you'd be walked to your room to meet your new teacher with your caregiver or your parents. You fast forward now, same scenario, all the same feelings, except now you have to be handed over outside of a building to a group of strangers enmasked. So before our kids even start their day, they already feel a sense of loss, and now we're expecting them to learn? Social distancing, iPad games, walking around like zombies to maintain a distance of six feet and wearing face muzzles, including at recess and PE, is not how I want my children living. This feels more like Nazi Germany, not America, land of the free. We will be seeing the effects of this for generations. In March 2021, there was a news report and a survey that was taken by the students at the prominent Rockwood School District. It revealed that out of 852 students, 550 had recently considered taking their own life. 160 had actually attempted to take their own life, and 19 had just tried the previous week. As a mother of two, this is absolutely horrific. We have had enough of the pandemic, COVID crisis nonsense. The real crisis is people like you, Mr. Page, who use their man-given authority to try and control others while you reap the benefits. What you don't know is that you don't have the right to take away my God-given breath and my God-given rights, and if you think you do, you are mistaken. I know that I am not the only one here who shares the same conviction as me, and we will not stop fighting until we're heard. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Haley Walton, followed Our next speaker is Haley Walton, followed by Alina Walton.
My name is Haley, and my zip code is 63043. And I've been here the last three weeks, and I've completely forgot to tell you guys this, my 13-year-old, who proudly comes with me every week because it means a lot to her. So, and she's speaking right after me as she signed up, so. Anyways, I've met some amazing people over these last few weeks that their freedom means just as much to them as it does to me, and they've also became like family to me. Now let's talk about Clancy's bill, in which I want to make sure that everyone is aware that what Clancy is trying to pass is an ordinance, not a mandate, and an ordinance is forcible by law, just so we're clear here. And I want to make sure everybody in the council knows what they're, you know, voting on, which I'm sure you guys do. Anyways, so why are we doing all the things that didn't work the first time around, like the masks and all that jazz? Anyways, before it was if you get vaxxed, you don't have to wear a mask, which y'all have already heard numerous people speak up about these last few weeks. So I'm sure it will just be the same garbage, and they'll come up with something new to try to put on us to follow. A good friend of mine spoke with the director of her son's preschool, I believe she's in Afton, and they informed her that there would be disciplinary action if not wearing a mask. They were told that it has to be over the nose, balls must be covered, and action number two would be call home, and they would have to pick up the child. And number three would be get kicked out. We are talking three and four-year-old kids. Mind you, this child has a sensory processing disorder and a speech delay, and they learn by seeing our mouths move, which is also how they learn to talk. We, as humans, thrive off of facial expressions, and masking takes that away from us and our children. We demand to see the science you are following that tells you that the safest thing to do to our children is strict separation from each other while wearing a germ-carrying muzzle that hinders their oxygen intake and dehumanizes their view of themselves and others. Is that what you call safe for our children? Show us the science, prove that what you are doing is in the best interest of our children, because to me, it is child abuse. And I'd like to add that it's funny to me that we are considered super-spreaders in this room when there's like more than 200 people in here to speak out about our freedoms, trying to save our freedoms, like save what we have left. But Obama can have over 500 people at his birthday party over this weekend, and that's okay? That sounds hypocritical to me and shows that it's nothing but political and not about our health. Also, for those of you that...
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
Oh, okay. I was just gonna say that there's some papers going around to recall Sam Page if you haven't signed it yet.
Our next speaker is Alina Walton, followed by Angie Isaac.
Hello, my name is Alina. My zip code is 63043, and I'm speaking up for the kids that can't or feel too intimidated to speak. So I go to school for seven hours in a mask, and I think it's unacceptable, not counting the 35 minutes on the bus. I have seen my friends that have gotten the experimental vaccine get sick right after they got the shot. Hmm, I wonder why? And I just want to know, if the mask worked so well, why do people still get COVID? It's just so funny how you guys think it's working. If the vaccine also worked so well, why do people have to still wear the masks, still get in COVID, even if they've gotten the vaccine? I can't stand wearing the masks. They give me migraines. This survival rate for the kids my age is almost 100%. So quit with the fear tactics and quit forcing us kids or anyone at that to wear a mask. It should always be a choice to wear a mask or get experimental vaccines, because after all, it's my body.
Our next speaker is Angie Isaac, followed by Sarah Isaac.
Angie Isaac, 63040. Councilwoman Clancy, you're deceitful and deceptive. We see you, we know what you're trying to do. What you're introducing tonight is...
Hey, hey, quiet out, quiet out, quiet out. Please hold for a moment. But Clancy is not there.
Ma'am. She's here for the people. She does this all the time.
She chose not to participate, and that's her right. So let's move on.
So I'm here to have my grievances heard, and I can't even do that. I hope you all understand what you're doing. I have a constitutional right to petition all of you with my grievances for redress, and she is denying me that. Councilwoman Clancy, you're deceitful and deceptive. We see you, we know what you're doing. The bill you're introducing tonight is not only a mask ordinance, but a vaccine mandate. You're threatening citizens by forcing them to cover their faces until 70% of the county is injected with a pharmaceutical drug, trying to justify it by using Marxist terms such as collective good and common good, shows your true motives, which is to force submission to your viewpoint. Collective good and common good, they've been used for the justification of the murder of millions throughout history. And let's not forget, this country has killed thousands and thousands of babies in the womb, especially black babies. So you telling us to wear masks to save lives is a joke, and it's an embarrassment, and you're all responsible. Councilwoman Daze Webb, most of the unvaccinated and those with vaccine hesitancy in St. Louis County are black, and then your district, their vaccine hesitancy is justified. They should not trust our current government. Some of your constituents may even work or contract with St. Louis County. Last week, Councilwoman Webb, you stated several times that no one tells you what to do, not even your husband. Councilwoman Webb, I believe you're introducing a mandate tonight that all county government employees receive COVID-19 inoculation or submit to regular COVID testing if they want to keep their jobs. Councilwoman Webb and Daze, by voting yes to Councilwoman Clancy's regular... By voting yes to regular COVID testing, Councilwoman Webb and Daze, by voting yes to Councilwoman Clancy's ordinance, as well as your own mandate, Councilwoman Webb...
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
Regarding Council...
Just a couple more minutes.
You are using your power to tell your constituents and your coworkers what they must do with and to their own bodies. You are saying loud and clear for all of them to hear that you want to force citizens, constituents, and coworkers to submit to mandatory pharmaceutical injections at the will of the government, as the government sees fit, in order to work and move about freely. The hypocrisy is deafening. Do you hear us?
Ms. Isaac, I've given you extra time, so thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Sarah Isaac, followed by Julie Sanders.
Hi, my name is Sarah Isaac. Last Tuesday, August 3rd, I attended the county council meeting, and I recall Councilwoman Clancy stating, "We need to stand together for public health." A few days later, she posted on her social media that there was no talk about our collective good, and she also said, "Doing the right thing is hard, but not doing the right thing is even harder." Councilwoman Clancy, I have a hard time believing forcing people against their will to wear a mask is the right thing to do, considering a box of surgical cloth masks even said does not work against preventing COVID-19. I'm not a doctor nor a scholar, but I know how to use common sense. Stop undermining our intelligence. Stop treating us like we're subjects. By enforcing an unlawful and unconstitutional mandate and claiming it is the right thing to do is infringing upon my right to choose what is best for my health and my safety. Forcing people to wear a face covering or get a vaccination is not about our collective good or the public health. It is about control and creating a false sense of security. The term "common good" or "collective health" has been used by tyrants throughout history. The common good is used to expand the power of rulers at the expense of the ruled. If you are that terrified of a virus with at least a 98% recovery rate, go ahead and wear however many masks you deem as appropriate, get however many shots that your arm can handle. If you're that scared, why not just wear a hazmat suit and never leave your house? Here in America, we have the right to choose whether or not to wear a mask or to receive a vaccination. The liberty we have to choose is what makes America an exceptional nation. It is a right gifted from God, our Creator. Taking away that right, Councilwoman Clancy, is tyranny, and as evidenced throughout history, we, the people, will continue to stand together in unity to fight against tyrants like you and anyone else who votes yes to this ordinance. Eradicating freedom to eradicate a virus is a dangerous path to go down. Life is a risk, and with risk, we choose fear or bravery. We will not comply.
Our next speaker is Julie Sanders, followed by Alex Dragomir.
I'm Julie Sanders. I'm 63011. I want to thank the five of you who showed up to your job. I believe you are essential. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the children and other vulnerable people in our county. Children who wear masks, children who are constantly reminded of the fear, the fear, the fear, their brains actually become hardwired in the back of the brain, the amygdala, and those pathways become super highways. So anytime they're triggered, it's an immediate physiological response, and it bypasses logic and reason. That's a big deal. In the future, what we're going to see is children who are triggered by people who approach them on the sidewalk. They're going to be triggered by somebody touching their stuff, by trying to hug them. All of this trauma is going to bubble up later on in life, and we're going to see an epidemic, a true epidemic of mental illness. We're going to see anxiety, depression, suicide, substance abuse, self-medication. The list goes on and on. These kids will be high-risk. So for the last year and a half, the responsibility falls on Sam Page for what has happened to these children, but if you vote on this tonight, the responsibility will fall on you. These children need to be protected from the fear. That's what they need most. And I would also say that people who have lived through trauma are traumatized by the masks, so adults also. You have no idea what some people have lived through, and to put a mask over them reminds them of very traumatic experiences. And you don't have a place to say, "This is what you have to do." That is unfair and unjust and not American. Thank you so much for listening.
Our next speaker is Alex Dragomir, followed by Austin Connor.
My name is Alex Dragomir, and I live in zip code 63116. You know, and the people gathered here tonight to say, "Enough, no more." You know, the best thing people can do to understand the world around them is what David Reich says, which is, "The world is run by psychopaths and run by idiots." You know, Aldous Huxley said, "Facts do not cease to exist because they are ignored." And so the massive chasm that needs to be crossed is the fact that there is no virus. There is not a single scientific paper on planet Earth that shows this alleged virus to exist. How can there be a virus? Or if there was an infectious virus, why do you need a test, a PCR test that doesn't test for any virus, as its inventor, Carey Mullis, stated? Why do you need to scam the death certificates of people who have died of other reasons? Why do you need to have an increase in the number of symptoms one has from all sorts of other things? Because it's a scam, because it's a way to just label everything COVID. And you know those images you see of a virus that people think is a virus? All that is, you know, with the little things sticking out of the ball, all that is is a computer-generated image. You know, why do hospitals need to give incentives like $4,600 to diagnose people with regular pneumonia, $13,000 if the symptoms are dubbed COVID-19 pneumonia, and $39,000 if they put a COVID-diagnosed patient on a ventilator, which will kill them? What did the Nazis say? They said, "The bigger the lie, the more we'll believe it." Whether you believe this happened naturally or by accident or on purpose, the common theme is that there is a virus and that there is something that needs to be addressed, which justifies reasons to impose even more fascistic impositions and to justify even more fake variants. And by the way, these variants, if you have been paying attention, they're actually called by brain activity. They're talking about alpha variants, beta variants, and now the delta variant, which, by the way, delta is the state in which we have...
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. Mr. Dragomir, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Our next speaker is Austin Connor, followed by Laura Strasser.
Austin Connor, 6026. Something I didn't write down, delta is actually a mathematical symbol for change, by the way. I understand I look young, but I have three college degrees to an applied science. I'm a legal adult, and my life has only improved because I have the right to make medical decisions for myself without unwanted intervention from the government. And if I told you the specifics, maybe even you'd agree. I'm sure there are things we should all be, we would all rather be doing. There are better issues we're tackling, things like our schools, or traffic issues, or crime. There are likely many other issues pertaining to the country, to the county, that don't include attempts to micromanage the lives of the people who live and work here. But we've got this mask and vaccine thing again. Why? I suspect this move is as empty and performative as the time you listed your pronouns next to your name. Even I don't do that, because the moral grandstanding for your radical base is more important than the majority of people you're supposed to represent. I suspect you push these because of politics. You might be playing for a team, not for St. Louis County, and certainly not for America. There are friends elements on the right, too, but this boogeyman, that they all are a bunch of racist, selfish plague rats, is simply not true. In fact, there's a lot of disillusioned left who agree with this on the subject of authoritarian control being a bad thing. Trust me, I was a Bernie bro in early 2016. I'm afraid of the slippery slope that follows if we let the line be crossed here, and the ordinance's end condition of a 70% vaccinated population is not as concrete as a specified amount of time. Those are conditions that may never be met, and it is undue pressure on people to take a medical procedure that may not be right for them. I wish this mask mandate marathon would end, and we could all return to other issues. But until that happens, I urge the people to keep coming back. The people's participation in politics has been long neglected. Seeing the people getting involved with the process makes some politicians uncomfortable. They don't like it very much. And you know what? Good. I formally invite politicians who ignore, who belittle, and who push aside their constituents to be as uncomfortable as they can permit themselves to be. And for those holding office who don't treat us with condescension, to those who actually listen to us and at least consider our words, thank you.
Our next speaker is Laura Strasser, followed by Nancy Jordan.
Hi, I'm Laura Strasser, zip code 63131. Thank you for having me again this evening, and thank you to everyone who's coming to share important information and facts that unfortunately we're not able to hear. We're being silenced, our thoughts are being banned, things we're trying to share to educate each other, we're not being allowed...
Let me ask the speaker, too.
Sorry. I'm not speaking into the microphone. Just like I wasn't. I'm sorry. I was acknowledging that we're not able to hear things, and I appreciate being here to be able to do that and hear other things that we're being banned from sharing, information and facts that are important. And I thank the media for being here. I hope that a lot of this is going to be shared, because our voices need to be heard, not all the fear that is constantly, every day, shared day in and day out about this. not all the fear that is constantly, every day, shared, day in and day out, about this. I also have questions, and I know one of the big proponents of having this mask mandate is the teachers' union. I'd like to know why there was about 300 school administrators and teachers in attendance last weekend, August 2nd, or I guess that's two weekends ago, at the Department of Education and DESSA, whatever it is. Anyway, I'm nervous, I'm sorry. But they had an old-school conference. They were eight to 10 at a table. There was no social distancing, and there were very few masks. But my children are going to ride in a bus again this year, they're going to be in a mask, as we've heard, for eight and 10 hours. They're forced to social distance, they can't see each other, they can't talk to each other, they're silenced on the bus, they're yelled at in class and ridiculed when they're taking their mask down. There are a lot of those facts. What about our kids? What about the anxiety and depression? My kids have been bullied for their choice not to be vaccinated, for my choice not to vaccinate them. My daughter is leaving her school in her senior year of high school, because she has been bullied and told that people do not want to hang around her, and she should go kill herself. This is not okay, and this is only the start. We're walking back into school. We're sending our children in to be bullied, to be shunned, to be segregated. This is not okay. This is not okay. The other questions that need to be answered is, if the masks aren't working, we've proven that, even the CDC is saying that, so why are we even having a meeting about more mask mandates? They do not work. So why are we doing that? I have other questions about the other health issues that come along with wearing a mask. COVID mouth is a very real thing with dentists. The bacteria is causing gum deterioration and other health issues for our children and even adults. Enough is enough. The last thing I'd want to know is, what does President Biden do with the 3 million immigrants that have been let in the country without not only their COVID vaccines, but the other vaccines that we're required to get to be in attendance at many things? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nancy Jordan, followed by Karen Smith.
Hello, my name is Nancy Jordan, 63049. Ms. Clancy, if I could get your attention, that'd be great. You're blatant hypocrite, hypocrite, you're hypocritical about to try to force Americans to wear a mask and get vaccinated. It's laughable, to the point where we all know you're a member of Pro-Choice Missouri. Let me read you a quote from the very website that you support that kills babies. "The right to choose abortion is essential to ensuring a woman can decide for herself if and when and with who to start and grow a family. We will never stop fighting to protect, to expand this fundamental human right. You believe in my body, my choice." Let me use this very same fight quote to show the people's fight quote. "The right to choose to not vaccinate, to wear a mask, is essential to ensuring every American can decide for themselves if, when to vaccinate and to whom to be around with or without a mask. We'll never stop fighting to protect and expand this fundamental human constitutional right to live in free. Our bodies, our choice." You claim that your children are too young to vaccinate, so you want others to wear a mask. How about this, Lisa? Our freedom doesn't stop where your fear for just your children starts. Extremists such as yourself, to control the lives of others around you is discriminatory. Do you know the definition of discrimination, Lisa? It is a treatment or a consideration based on class or category, such as personal opinion, with no factual backup, rather than an individual merit. Hey, Lisa, if you're so concerned about what can kill your children, why haven't you outlawed alcohol? Any drunk driver can just leave a restaurant, could crash into your vehicle, taking out your two-year-old and your infant. If that's not just about you and yours, why haven't you outlawed cigarettes? It's a fact that kills the people at the tune of over 480,000 people a year, and is the leading cause of a preventable disease. If I were you, Lisa, I would try and save an ounce of dignity and make every attempt going forward to not willingly let everyone in the world know your absence of truth, integrity, and overall just being a decent person, by letting Americans make up their own mind and what is best for them and their own family. And one more thing, you do realize that the mask that you ask people to put on their face is made by the very country that gave us the virus, right? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Smith, followed by Leslie Fogarty.
Hello, my name is Karen Smith, and my zip code is 63119. I have a question as far as communication, not us having the opportunity to communicate to you, but getting communication back. I've sent multiple emails, and I have spoken before, and I've never gotten, for any of my communications, anything back from anyone. I wouldn't imagine that other districts would need to email me back, but I would expect that my councilperson, Clancy, should at some point acknowledge it. I sent to all of the council meeting, councilpersons this last week, several pictures, I believe there are seven pictures, and it was information about how the same photo, the same information, the exact same article was published in newspapers in seven different states. The exact same narrative was used in Missouri, in Washington DC, in Florida, in Georgia, and two other places. That, to me, is cause for, we've been asking for data, what's the data? We're using data that's being shared all over the country? Is that true? Are those 70 children in that article? Are they ours in Missouri? Are they from Florida? Are they from Washington DC? Or are they moving them around? So I contacted the Attorney General of the state of Missouri, and he did respond to me. And he sent me a letter that says, "Dear Mrs. Smith, thank you for bringing your concerns regarding the new mask mandates in St. Louis County and city to the attention of the Missouri Attorney General's office. These mask mandates are a classic form of governmental overreach. My office will not stand by while Missourians' rights and freedoms are being violated by these unconstitutional orders. That is why my office filed suit against both the county and city leadership to put a stop to this trampling of individual liberties. I have included a press release further detailing this suit. The input of sincere, involved citizens is vital to good government, and your comments regarding the issues facing our state are always welcome. Should you ever require assistance in the future, please do not hesitate to reach out for help." I would also like to bring to your attention, and I will give copies to the clerk and ask them to be added to the record, I wonder if you're aware that it is against federal law to be vaccinated against COVID-19 for employment or participation at a university or other institution that violates federal law. It has all the information about that. It says that people should be informed, and they have the right to refuse it. It is also against a federal law to mandate a person be tested against COVID-19 for employment or participation at a university or other institution. That's against federal law. We have the right to be notified, and we have the right to refuse.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
The third one is for masks, the same thing.
Ms. Smith, wrap it up pretty quick.
Yes, well, it is illegal. It is against federal law to mandate masks. It says it right here, just-
I'm giving you seven times.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Leslie Fogarty, followed by Jessica Carter.
Leslie Fogarty, 63135. Last week, I brought up two issues that I don't think anything got taken care of. One was the actor, Acting Director Khan. I don't think that this board has confirmed him, still in the unfinished business. And what are the results of the investigation from the July meeting? The second was Sam Page's $2.5 million that were sent to a George Soros organization. What's going on there? Perhaps the fake news media should participate in some real journalism and maybe look into that. Last week, Clancy stated that she received close to 800 emails from constituents that were afraid to show up to the meeting. I filed a sunshine law request for those emails. I didn't get an answer until five minutes before I was getting ready to leave for this meeting, and what I got was 60, about 62 records that weren't even in her district, most of them, and they were not all against the mask mandate. So I don't know what's going on there. Is that just a lie? I don't know. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. This council overturned want-to-be dictator Sam Page's mandate two weeks ago. A court upheld that result. Now Clancy is trying to make the mask mandate law. Please, stop the insanity and do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessica Carter, followed by Denise Burrow.
Hi, I'm Jessica Carter, 63126. I am so sick of hearing all of this, I'm just done with it. I really hope that we can vote this down today and not have it reintroduced in the future. Oh, God, please, let's just end it. So, since I'm sick of it, I wanted to start with a joke today. Okay. Here it is. More people are vaccinated today than any other day of this whole ordeal. But now we want to get mask mandates. Why? Why, guys? Like, I don't know. I just, I don't even have any understanding why this makes sense. Because first, we were saying that, you know, if you're vaccinated, you're fine, but now we went vaccines and the mandate, and we're heading into what is, well, it used to be called flu season, but now that's out of style, because we don't like count flu anymore. This isn't going to get better anytime soon. I mean, do you guys think that coronavirus is ever going to actually go away? Coronaviruses are like influenza, they're a virus, and they naturally mutate, no matter what, no matter what. They're here to stay. And just like people with influenza, no amount of vaccinated people will completely get rid of it, because there will always be breakthrough cases, and there will always be more mutations. That's how the evolution of viruses work. And like the evolution of humanity, we will continue to naturally survive them. It's good news, guys, it's good news. The thing about all of these mandates that we've had so far is that you're basing it on what you want to call science, but science has never settled. And everyone who keeps saying the same thing over and over about how these masks work, they are not having a true discussion on science. Science is meant to include discussion, debate, critical thinking, perspectives, all information. Science naturally evolves, and that's why I'm not mad that the advisories have been changing throughout all this. We went from masks don't work, everyone needs to wear them now, oh, now only the unvaxxed, oh, now everyone again. And I'm not mad, because I understand that sometimes leadership is wrong, just like how it was wrong to shut down the businesses. And it's not entirely unfathomable that a few years down the road, we might say, yeah, it was wrong to impose these mask mandates on people. It was wrong to have all these people suffer, mental health, physical health, COVID mouth, all of this. It's wrong, and I don't want you guys to be the ones to put us down that journey. I mean, even the CDC is now saying that the vaccinated are the ones carrying the high viral load. So, okay, let's finish this. We've destroyed our economy, we've destroyed people's mental health, let's stop this. We don't want this mandate, we don't want the last one, we don't want any. We're done. Stop it.
Our next speaker is Denise Burrow, followed by Kim Landgraf.
Who was that, Kim?
So not Denise, I think, Daniel Burrow. Is that right? I mean, I don't want to take Denise's Burrow's thing, she's here.
No, it's Daniel Burrow.
I gotta make sure. I gotta make sure. All right. You know, I have something all printed up to read, and I don't know if I can cram it into three minutes, but I am going to start with a document that I read all the time, and I suggest that everybody gets a copy of it, keep it with you. It's a little thing called the Declaration of Independence. We started there, my Patriots sister, wherever she's at. She left, okay, well, I'm going to echo of her, I guess, then. All right, she took the same exact spots that I was at. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And I skipped down there, too. "That whatever a form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government." And we're going to cherry-pick and go down here a little bit, where she was at, and pick it up. "But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing invariably the same object, invents a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, and it is their..." What? All right. To do what? Throw off such government. It's our right, it's our duty, that's why we're here. That's what I love, and I'm going off script, because every one of these people, I don't know that I can add too much to what's already been said, because I agree with everything that's been said here, and I bet you that everybody in this place agrees with us. Yep, you got it. I'll look right at you. All right, I appreciate you giving the opportunity, but I wanted to let you know that there's so much love in this room. There's so much love in this room, and that is the power that we need. We need love, we need, we have one voice, and we know what it is. It's we the people. It's we the people. I mean, everybody covered the masks and the vax and everything else. We all know. If you know, you know, right? We know the science. The science. When the thing says, "Right on the box," doesn't work. That's never changed, by the way, that's not, that's not like evolving. That's, you can pick up a box anywhere and it'll say the same thing. I don't know. Bottom line is, you don't get to make the medical decisions for my children. I'm a father, I got two kids, and you'll not, you're not going to continue this tyranny against them, put them at a high risk of getting sick, causing them physical harm by breathing their own CO2, which, look that up, it's not good. Not while, not while I have breath in my lungs, and I'm going to keep a mask off of mine so I can try to save my kids. I bet these people are, too. Don't write us off, okay? Don't dismiss us. We the people never give up, and the Myrtle words, the immortal words of E. Snyder, "We're not going to take it anymore."
Our next speaker is Kim Landgraf, followed by Cory Nations.
What was that name?
Is Kim Landgraf, Landgraf, in attendance? Madam Chair, we're going to move to our next speaker, Cory Nations, followed by Larry Nations.
I want to make sure you're on the correct screen and can actually see the meeting you're supposed to be attending, so please raise a hand if you're paying attention. Anybody? Thank you. So please pay attention, Ms. Clancy, I'm really directing this to you. I'd like you to know that I am a homeschooling mom of six, and I believe that I can have an amazing career and be a mom, and that children don't hinder this goal and can only help you fuel it. Because this meeting is so important, I secured an amazing and loving person to watch my children so I can be fully present here tonight. I hope you did, too. You want masks, Ms. Clancy, until there is 70% vaccinated status in St. Louis. A vaccine restriction should only happen if there is no other treatment for the illness. And let's be clear, this is truly what this all is about, a play for vaccines and not about masks. Are you paying attention still? Just checking. I encourage you to listen to the vast amounts of highly intelligent people in this audience and those across the United States who are not being paid and just want to help with their vast amounts of reliable research. I'm a business owner, and my business requires that my masks, my clients are not masked. By requiring masks, you are directly affecting my business and my family, not only through my income, but also through my right as an American citizen. Maybe you will listen, since I myself run a minority-owned business, being a biracial Indian and a woman, you are harming the very people you claim to protect. I don't- I know it's hard being a mom. But as G.K. Chesterton says, "Without authority, there is no liberty. Freedom is doomed to destruction at every turn unless there is a recognized right to freedom, and if there are rights, there is an authority to which we appeal for them." Last year's heroes are this year's jobless. This board needs to stand up and stand strong for what is right, as your constituents are doing. We believe that a mask ordinance will do more harm than good. Do your research and make us proud. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Larry Nations, followed by McKenna Sauerman.
Larry Nations, 63021. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and fellow citizens. I just had some questions for you to ponder and think about. Is there a way for the general public to easily protect themselves from COVID? If you say no, then why are we here taking, talking about masks and other things that are not going to help bend the curve? If you say yes, then the council must ask themselves, is it our job to tell the public how they must live their lives? If you say yes, I must make, I must make you protect yourself, then why don't I see you slapping cigarettes and french fries out of people's mouths when they're eating them and smoking them? I know that sounds ridiculous, but if you look at the actual data of the efficacy of masks protecting people from spreading the virus, that's just as ridiculous as slapping cigarettes and french fries out of people's hands and mouths. I would say no. It is not your job. I appreciate your concern, but telling your constituents how they will live their lives is not your job. It will never be your job. I'm a physical therapist, and I work with the homebound and the elderly every day. I'm in every one of your constituencies', uh, houses on a daily basis, and I talk to them and their families. And you know what their number one concern is? The mask mandates, the vaccines, everything. It's people telling them what to do. Their fear is not the mask ordinance. Their fear is, well, if we do that, what's next? And then what's after that? And what's after that? Right? They're just concerned about their rights and doing those things. Now, you'll have to take my word about it, but it's about 80% of my people are my clients, are my patients, and their families that say this, right? The vast majority of them don't want anything to do with the mask. Finally, our Councilwoman Clancy, last week you said that you had to propose this bill for all the constituents that were frankly too scared to even come down to this meeting for fear of catching COVID. Well, maybe it's best that they stay home, but they are obviously not as scared as all the people who showed up, who are in fear for the loss of their job, their business, the health, mental and emotional health of their children, and all those things from the choices that you guys may make. Finally, I ask you to repeal this ordinance for all the reasons you've already heard. And, uh, lastly, Joe Biden, our president, I say "our" president because although I may not agree with most of what he does, he is our president, he said twice in the last week that there's been 350 million Americans vaccinated. Last I checked, there's only 330 million, so we're past your 70%, Ms. Clancy. We're done.
Our next speaker is McKenna Sauerman, followed by Stephen Benner.
Hi, I'm McKenna Sauerman, 63026. When asked whether or not the people should pay taxes to Caesar, Jesus replied, "Render to Caesar the things that are Caesar's and to God the things that are God's." You can find this in the Book of Mark in chapter 12. I am a Christian, and I do believe in the inherent word of God, so I believe that we must render to our civil government the things that are theirs and to God the things that are his. I render to my civil government my money in the form of my taxes, my respect for their authority, and my obedience to constitutional and biblical law. But my convictions are not yours to take. Your face, my face, is not yours to cover, and my blood is not yours to experiment with. My life is not owed you. It belongs to my God alone. I render to you all that is yours, but my health is not yours and my life is not yours. You tell us now that it's not a big deal, it's just a piece of cloth. It starts small, but it never stops small. You say for now it's just a mask, but it becomes, it's just a mandated, a mandated vaccine. It's just not singing in church. It's just isolation. It's just your livelihood. We've experienced these steps just in the last year, and unchecked, it only gets worse. History tells us where this ends. It turns into, it's just your liberty. It's just your faith. It's just your humanity, and it's just your soul. We come here to speak about the liberty we cherish and defending our God-given rights because make no mistake, they are God-given. They are from Him and not from you, and your only job is to defend them, not take them or grant them. In the Book of Isaiah, chapter nine, it is said of Jesus, "For to us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, and Prince of Peace." Your authority does not surpass the authority of God, whether you believe in Him or not. I plead with you not to infringe on what belongs to God by the passing of these ordinances, but make no mistake, even if you do, my face, my life, my health, and my soul still does not belong to you. You can't have them, and frankly, it is wrong for me to render them to you. And if you do pass these ordinances, I still will not comply.
Hi, my name is Stephen Benner. Um, I currently live in St. Charles County, but I'm representing my church, Church of the Word, which is in St. Louis County, Fenton, Missouri, 63026. Um, I did live in St. Louis County up until about three months ago, so I lived there for about seven years. But anyways, much of what I was planning on saying tonight was reiterated way better than I could by others. Um, I'm no medical doctor. I'm no teacher of special needs children. Um, I'm, uh, a leader in my church, um, but I'm, I did want to speak a little bit tonight as a father of three children. Um, I have an eight-year-old, I have a six-year-old, I have a one-year-old, and, you know, as any parent knows, it's a great joy to get to see your children grow. It's a great joy to get to see them learn to crawl, uh, learn to walk, learn to talk, learn to express themselves. Um, it's a great joy as a parent to get to watch your kids smile at you for the first time. You know, there's, there's many, many months as a parent when your, when your child is newly born, um, where you smile at them, you laugh at them, you, you coddle them, you love them, and it's no expressions back. But what do they eventually learn to do? They eventually learn to smile at you. And then, and, and it's amazing to watch, as I'm sure you've noticed as a parent, what do your children do when, when you're talking to them? They're looking at you right in the eyes. They're looking at you right in the face, as you're saying, mama, dada, bubba, sissy. They're watching your lips. They're watching your expressions. They, when you smile at them, they smile back at you. This ability to communicate is essential to us as individuals. It's why we're here tonight. Being able to effectively communicate what we believe, what we desire, what's important to us, is fundamental to a developing society. It's fundamental to growing as a people. It's fundamental to communicating the fact that we agree or disagree with people. Uh, America is built on the fact that we don't all agree, and it's built on the fact that we're going to defend that right to, to not all agree. Why? Because it's important that we can discuss things and debate things and come to conclusions about things. Why do I go into all of that? Well, I go into all of that because children need to learn how to communicate with each other. Children need to learn how to talk. They need to learn how to express their emotions. How do they do that? They do that by watching the faces of their parents. They do that by watching the faces of their teachers. They do that by watching the faces of their, of their daycare and their childcare providers. My, my, my big, I have many, many problems with this mask mandate. Many of them have been mentioned here today. Whether the council has the right to do that is one, whether you have the right to take my liberties. But one of the things as a father that, that deeply concerns me, and for not only my own children, but many, many other children, is the fact that these little ones and twos and threes and four-year-olds, who in many lower-income communities spend almost all of their childhood in daycares because their parents have to work to provide for them and take care of them, they're learning to communicate. How? By staring at a mask. And they're not going to learn. And, uh, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Justine Case, followed by Debbie Phail.
Hello. Uh, 63123. Um, last week, I can't believe I'm still here doing this again. Um, I just want to remind you, I am a citizen. I am not a subject, and I refuse to allow you to treat me as such. Because we are humans, we learn best via reading out loud, so I would ask that the council mandate that those that are on Zoom must never have us on mute, that children, pets, phones must be turned off, and that the Zoom may not be turned off. Lisa, I will address you, even though that gentleman did not. I have been a single parent. I ask you to do your job. As a single parent, I also nursed my child, and I had to put my milk aside so that other people could feed him when I couldn't. This is your job that you begged your people to vote you in for, which means you need to pay attention, you need to find a babysitter, and if your father of your children cannot be said parent, then you need to find one of your constituents that love you to be your babysitter, someone you trust. Instead, you are forcing to stay on Zoom and not be part of this council live. Sam Page, you are not, you are not paying attention, obviously. Thank you very much, Sam Page. Are you paying attention, Lisa? Raise your hand. No, you're not. Okay. Sam Page, uh, all Americans, all, all St. Louis County citizens, I would recommend that if you are a mercy person, uh, to go to your My Mercy and put on there that you do not want Sam Page to be part of your, uh, medical, uh, procedures. I am part of the control group. I do not need a mandated jab because I am part of the control group. I almost died in January. I do not need this. There is a study that came out about the jabs. Came out on December 18th of 2020. Sam Page, you might not have read it, since you are not paying attention, obviously. Can you raise your hand? No, you cannot. Okay. It, it was from Osaka, Japan, and it talked about the animals that, uh, were part of the experiment. And I want to let you know and let all of us here know that all the ferrets died. Sam Page, mister, I'm not paying attention, you're not a doctor, obviously, because you're not paying attention. Read the medical research. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Debbie Phail, followed by Joan Hoffman.
Hi, I'm Debbie Phail, 63114. I had something planned, um, that I was going to share, but I think I'm going to go off-script. What 2020 did for most, when the lockdowns forced us to stay home, we then had the time to think and research. We discovered what was really going on in our governing bodies. And because of the lockdown, we, the people, have awakened, so we thank you for that. Councilwoman Dunaway, I researched you, and what I found was interesting. I will recite your words given during your campaign. My campaign is about transparency, accountability, and responsiveness. That means I want to hear from you. I want to know what issues matter to you. My priority is you and your family and making your community better. You also stated your experiences make you a greater representative for our district. You knew the people deserved a representative that understands what it means to be counted out and dismissed. So you can imagine my puzzlement to find you haven't held up your word in stating you want to bring back honor and integrity, as well as responsiveness to your constituents when they reach out to you for help. Okay, so I'm going to go by that. All right. Also, Lisa Clancy, this is off-script. This is really funny, because if your people so believed in masks, why aren't they here with the masks that are supposed to protect them, right? Right? I mean, you're pushing the masks, but yet your people that you are going to vote for are not even here. I think that's hilarious. I mean, that speaks volumes about what a lie this all is. This is a farce, and it's stopping now, because we're not going to handle it. We're not going to put up with it anymore. Okay, so, back to Kelly. Yet there are issues, okay, we, your constituents, are your employers, who sent you all to the position you now hold to represent us. Yet there are issues you're not taking care of, like voting against the will of your people with this nonsensical muzzles, and you haven't shown any evidence that paper or cloth muzzles protect anyone from viruses. We, the people, demand solid evidence, accurate numbers, and scientific proof of the need for muzzles, so-called vaccines, or lockdowns, because as of now, your validity is deeply flawed, and your campaign words are meaningless. And where is the honoring of my body, my choice? Is that only for slaughtering the unborn? Is that all it's for? And thanks to you, all of us will now be regular participants at the county council meetings, fulfilling, fulfilling our constitutional duties of keeping a watchful eye on the activities of our representatives and what is going on that affect the quality of life of St. Louis County residents.
Thank you, Ms. Phail. Next speaker is Joan Hoffman, followed by Phil Wagoner.
Good evening. Well, I think my fellow friends here have basically brought up most of the points I wanted to hit on, but there is one, there are one or two that I haven't heard yet, so I'm going to just focus on that. Whenever we hear about, where is your mask? Why aren't you wearing a mask? Why didn't you get a vaccine? There is something that we are not hearing about, and that is treatments. What are we doing for the people in the hospital suffering from COVID? Honestly, I don't know because I never hear about it. And that surprises me because for the past 15 months, 16 months, it's been all COVID all the time. So I would like to learn more about treatments, and I've been asking this every day that I come, and I'm probably going to keep asking it, but that's okay, because, you know, you woke me up, you brought me here, so now you get to listen to me, whether good or bad. Sorry. Um, I do want to ask another question, though. Let's assume that somebody's not vaccinated. How do we convince them to get vaccinated? I don't really know, but I do know what is not going to work. Calling them stupid, calling them science deniers, mandating a vaccine, and mandating a mask. And the reason those other, the, the last two, the mandates don't work, is because people are going to question, if I, if this works so well, why are you mandating it? Why are you forcing me? Why aren't you giving me the information I need? If it's so wonderful, tell me why it's wonderful. Tell me how it works. Give me the real numbers, and then maybe I'll want to go ahead and have it if I have, already haven't, and I don't need that mandate, because once you put in that mandate, you're going to get a lot of resistance. I can tell you that a lot of these people, they don't trust their government anymore. We have been fear-mongered and mandated for over a year, and we're done. We're, we're pretty much done. And then I have a couple more questions, and this speaks to the point that was in Ms. Webb's, uh, comment about walking and chewing gum at the same time. How are we going to prevent more teens from committing suicide this year? There were three in my daughter's former high school alone. Yes, and also, how do we prevent more people from getting shot in North County? My daughter loves those restaurants. She wants to go. I have to hear about it. If I have to hear about it, you all have to hear about it. Tell me how we're going to make it safe. I'm sure Ms. Webb and Ms. Daze have some ideas. Is Ms. Dr. Page hearing about them? I don't know. It's not just COVID lives that matter. They all matter, and I'm not just saying that for political points. I know I'm almost done. I'm saying that because it's true. Every single life does matter. So if you don't want to talk about that, how about we just stop talking?
Thank you, Phil.
Our next speaker is Philip Wagonek, followed by Maureen Lauer.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Philip Wagonek. I'm a veterinarian. I provide some veterinary service to St. Louis County Animal Shelter and Animal Control. I've done that for over 30 years, on and off, as when they needed help. I'm not an employee of the county. I'm here to support the mask mandate, and obviously, I'm the minority here tonight. I don't expect any applause afterwards. I hope this group will call upon some of the medical infectious people that's in this community. I'm not talking about employees, but the people at our universities, because we have such wonderful medical community here, for their opinions on what you're trying to pass tonight. But first, I want to pivot briefly to the animal shelter, because tomorrow night, I've seen a promo from KMOV that they're going to have a segment, and I think it's not gonna be flattering, it's gonna be condemning of the county animal shelter. And I think it's totally, it's not gonna be balanced, and it's time that this county stands up for that department. I've watched them over the years. It's never been better operated than it is now, in my opinion. Euthanasia rates are low, animals are healthy, given our circumstances there. And so our citizens need to hear some positive things about the animal shelter. Back to why I'm here tonight. I support masking with good masks, like N95 masks. They're effective. There's hundreds of thousands of people that wear masks every day in their job, in research, construction. We don't hear a lot of complaints about them wearing those. N95 masks are available at a very reasonable price. This is not about, I vote more Republican than Democrat. This is not about religion, about politics, control, Constitution. In fact, you talk about Constitution. In 1905, the Supreme Court ruled in favor of mandatory smallpox vaccination in the face of a crisis. They talk about freedom? Well, I would say this is not about freedom unless it's a freedom to infect other people. My experience is that people who don't wear masks typically are thinking about themselves, and not thinking about the number-one reason to wear a mask is that you don't transmit it. And with the new Delta virus, that can happen even with people vaccinated. And I would only say in closing that in 1918...
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
In 1918...
Dr. Wagonek, please wrap up very quickly.
In 1918, the St. Louis City Medical Director and the mayor and alderman came forth with real strong measures to control the 1918 flu, and the result was that we had 2,000 deaths versus Philadelphia, as an example, that had 16,000 deaths. So I ask you to do...
Thank you.
It's not about who's right. It's about doing the right thing.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maureen Lauer, followed by John Glasgow.
Good evening. My name's Maureen Lauer, 63049.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maureen Lauer, 63049. I'm gonna borrow a little bit from the youngest member of Congress, Madison Cawthorn. I am a mother and a grandma, and I'm very concerned about masking and vaccinating and ordinances and stripping of freedoms that our nation, our forefathers fought hard and strong to put in place, so that we would be able to live a life of liberty, to know that pursuit of happiness and life liberty, and that pursuit of happiness. I'm also a retired registered nurse. When this masking thing first started, I was like, wow, they would have kicked me out of nursing school if I would have applied a mask like this. They wouldn't have let me, you know, even get my degree. So I was just like, so puzzled, like, how is this in the world, something that they're saying is healthy and needful? So when we're muscling, I have a really strong heart for children, and I know that there's probably many people who do not agree with me, but it breaks my heart to see little children, little people, with what I call muzzles. They can't talk, they can't be heard very clearly, and it does, as was stated earlier, affect their development. It affects their psychological and emotional well-being. And these tactics that are put in place now, if they're not addressed and brought down and stopped, it's stripping away our liberties. It's stripping away, one by one, what we've been known for, the ability to think for ourselves and do for our families and make decisions with the God-given intelligence granted to us, and to respect our own selves, but also care about, I care about the future. I really care about the future of our children. And I can't be silent. That's why I'm here tonight. I know I'll give an account for my silence, or what I do or don't do. I know I will give an account. Each of us will.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
Thank you very much. Is this Mr. Glasgow?
Dr. John Glasgow.
Thank you, Mr. Glasgow. This will be our last, to end at 8:40. You will be our last speaker for the evening, okay?
All right.
All right. Thank you.
I'm Dr. John Glasgow. I'm a Vietnam veteran. When I was 19 years old, I was sent into combat. Not normal combat. I was in a special option. We operated exclusively behind enemy lines. We had no mask to hide behind. Comfort and aid to the enemy was an offense that could get you treason and hung. If you're wearing a mask, what is that flag all about? Those masks are a sign of submission in support of the CCP. They are behind this whole thing. The whole thing's a fake. The gentleman before saying we should be wearing an N95 mask, did you know an N95 mask, according to the manufacturer, says it only serves you down to 30 microns? A virus is down to three to five nanoparticles. That's 30,000 nanoparticles a mask is made of. It's going right through it. The mask can't stop anything. Your masks aren't even N95 masks. It does not stop the virus. It only shows everyone else that you're afraid. I had no chance to be afraid in Vietnam. I stood for the goddamn flag, our American Constitution. Now, let's be clear about this. I'm not here...
Sir, we don't want profanity. We just want to keep it clean. There may be children here.
I'm here to talk about your safety, your safety. Did you know that suppressing our freedom, our constitutional freedom, is an offense against American citizens? It can be called sedition or treason. We are currently under war since 9/11. Did you know that? Did you know Donald Trump in 2018 reinstated that act of war? Under an act of war, if you do something that is sedition or treason, you do not go to a civil court. You go to Gitmo, and you stand at a tribunal. If you knowingly take our freedoms away, if you knowingly support a virus that doesn't exist, you can be taken for sedition and treason, and it can go to hanging or shooting. They can pick what they want. It's not a fun tribunal. You don't get your own lawyer. You get a military lawyer. The decisions you make today can affect your future, not just ours. Let me cite a few things so you knowingly know what's going on. I have a doctor, but I'm not a medical doctor. I've done 30 years of medical research in viruses, bacteria, and aging. I have seen no RNA for COVID-19 on the NIH website. That's where all bacteria and viruses are listed. You can look at the actual markers. You can sequence and everything, and see if someone has that. COVID's not there. The CDC, three years in a row, in their annual COVID report, said we could find no RNA for COVID. This year, they said we cannot prove COVID from common flus.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
From common flus. So you now know there is no virus. I'm gonna copy this to you, Jim, if you don't mind. Share that with them. It's got all the numbers you need to keep yourselves out of jail.
Thank you so much, Mr. Glasgow.
Thank you, everybody. That ends our public forum. We will now have a report from the county executive.
Sir, if you would be so kind as to give the information to the clerk there, but we have given two hours.
Madam Chair, I move that we allow this gentleman to speak. We sit here patiently. I make a motion that we extend the public forum period for at least another 30 minutes.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion, Madam Chair.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Moving on to the county executive. Thank you, and I really appreciate that. We do need to move on, sir. County Executive?
Good evening. Across the country, kids are getting ready to head back to the classroom. It's the ideal learning environment, and one that most students have been away from for a year, as the pandemic upended all of our normals. Students 12 and over are eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine, and many parents are working to get their teens vaccinated as part of the back-to-school checklist. For our younger kids, they're not yet eligible for a vaccine. As a result, there is undisturbed anxiety. Delta variant is more contagious, and it is quickly driving up hospitalization numbers. The Pandemic Task Force reported Friday that 493 people were hospitalized from COVID-19, up from 93 two months earlier. Low vaccination rates are driving these numbers, and those working in pediatric units are seeing young patients struggling with the virus. That's why masks are so important for everyone to wear now. We must protect our children and the unvaccinated from harm. Masks are the best way to do this. Many of the schools in our region are requiring masks this fall. There is simply too much risk without putting some protective measures in place. We're seeing more and more businesses requiring in them as well to protect employees and the public. Unfortunately, the council voted down a mask requirement that would have protected us all, most notably our children and the unvaccinated. This decision ignored the advice of medical experts, guidance from the CDC, and recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics. The Pandemic Task Force has made a desperate plea: bring masking back. Without a consistent mask requirement across St. Louis County, the hodgepodge of mandates, recommendations, and outright ignoring of public health experts has brought confusion, anxiety, and anger. With no clear directive, more children will become ill with vaccine. More children will end up in ICUs. More children will miss out on school. We're seeing people younger and younger in our ICUs battling COVID-19. Those working in pediatric units here and across the country are sounding the alarm. In Louisiana, more than 3,000 children tested positive for COVID-19 in four days. These are startling numbers. Children who test positive for the virus can spread the virus to adult family members who are unvaccinated, and it's older people who are most commonly going to have poorer outcomes. I know that many of you support and respect the decision of public health professionals who want to do whatever it takes to get control of this virus. I also know that many of you don't want to be in a room filled with unmasked people to express your views. Two weeks ago, a city resident attending a council meeting tested positive for the virus. Masks and vaccines are the one-two punch to containing this virus, and the council should be doing all it can to get that message across. The majority of council members have said they support mask requirements, but did not like the way the initial mandate was put into place. There's an easy fix to that. The council can adopt its own mask requirement and let the legalities of the initial public health order on masks play out in court. Time is up. Kids are heading back to the classroom to make new friends, see old friends, prepare for their future, and create lifelong memories. Let's not let inaction stand in the way of that moving forward. Too many people remain unvaccinated, and young children are not able to get the vaccine. We must wear the mask for them. Wearing a mask protects our future, and I recognize personal liberty argument of this, but I can't see past risking the lives of others. Personal responsibility and personal liberty are not usually exclusive, especially when a pandemic is showing us quite clearly that it's not done with us. Masks and vaccine together, they are our path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to introduction bills.
Proceeding with introduction, Madam Chair. Bill number 219, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance amending Chapter 104 St. Louis County Revised Ordinance of 1974 as amended, Offices and Officers is amended by repealing and reenacting Section 104.065 pertaining to qualifications of the county auditor. Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 10,342 by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to PC 66-81 Ford Motor Credit Company. Bill number 221, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract and up to two subsequent one-year renewals with Access Information Management Corporation for Off-Site Record and Retrieval Services for the Department of Judicial Administration, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Judicial Administration to execute necessary documents. Bill number 222, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for replacement of Bridge Number 266 and the opening widening and establishing of a section of public road designated as Windcrest Drive, lying wholly within unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore and authorizing the execution of contracts, agreements, and related documents, CR-1292. Bill number 223, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Heinz Road, lying wholly within unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore and authorizing the execution of contracts, agreements, and related documents, CR-1282. Bill number 224, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing St. Louis County, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, Pathyon Biologics LLC Project Series 2021, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $85 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of an industrial development project in the county, approving a plan for the project and authorizing the county executive and the Director of Administration to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Bill number 225, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution on behalf of the county of certain documents pertaining to the refinancing of the county's obligations under that certain project financing, construction, and operation agreement between the Missouri Development Finance Board and the county relating to bonds originally issued to provide proceeds to be used to finance a portion of the cost of the ballpark project described herein, including a second amended and restated project financing, construction, and operation agreement between the Missouri Development Finance Board and the county, authorizing necessary corrections or revisions of the second amended and restated project financing, construction, and operation agreement prior to execution, approving as to form, and authorizing the second amended and reinstated trust indenture regarding the refunding bonds to be issued by the Missouri Development Finance Board, ratifying the appropriation of sufficient funds to pay the county's obligations under the second amended and reinstated project financing, construction, and operation agreement in the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2021, which will provide funds to pay the principal and interest due on refunding bonds issued by the Missouri Development Finance Board in such year, authorizing the county executive and other county officials to cause to be prepared and participate in the preparation of a preliminary official statement and a final official statement for the refunding bonds, and authorizing the taking of other actions and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent thereof to comply with the duties of the county hereunder. Bill number 226, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $19,500,000 aggregate principal amount of taxable special obligation refunding bonds, North Park... North Park Senior B TIF Project Series 2021D, and special obligation refunding bonds, North Park Senior B TIF Project Series 2021E, to A, provide funds to refund the Series 2015 Senior B bonds, B, fund a reserve fund for the bonds, and C, pay costs relating to the issuance of the bonds, approving and authorizing the execution of certain documents relating thereto, including but not limited to an indenture authorizing the issuance of such bonds and authorizing the execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent of the ordinance. Bill number 227, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of special obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021F of St. Louis County, Missouri, prescribing the forms and details of the bonds and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Bill number 228, introduced by Councilmember Webb, an ordinance, an ordinance amending Chapter 202 St. Louis County Revised Ordinance as 1974 is amended. Personnel classified service by adding and enacting one new section, 202.355, and amending Title II, Chapter 201 St. Louis County Revised Ordinance as 1974 is amended. Personnel general is amended by adding and enacting a new section, 201.270, both pertaining to establishment of a Covid-19 vaccination requirement for county employees. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Madam Chair, if I may...
Yes, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you. Besides proposing the controversial action of forcing individuals to submit to vaccination, Bill 228 presents a myriad of complex and intricate questions, not the least of which is what constitutes and who qualifies as a county employee and who doesn't. The requirement proposed by Bill 228 does nothing less than question the validity of the tenets upon which this country was founded. For these reasons, Madam Chair, I respectfully request that we schedule a committee of the whole before Bill 228 proceeds any further through the legislative process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tracus. We have already scheduled a committee of the whole for 217, I believe, and we can add that to the agenda since I believe that...
That would be fine.
...the information is congruent.
That would be fine. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I concur, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, we are on perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Please hold Bill number 75.
Bill number 75 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88 is held.
Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to hold Bill number 139. Bill number 139 is held.
Bill number 156, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill number 156.
Bill number 156 is held.
Bill number 191, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to hold Bill number 191. Bill number 191 is held.
Bill number 201, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to hold Bill number 201. Bill number 201 is held.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 202.
Bill number 202 is held.
Bill number 208, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 208. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 208 is perfected.
Bill number 209, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 209. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 209 is perfected.
Bill number 210, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 210. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill number 210 is perfected.
Bill number 211, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 211. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 211 is perfected.
Bill number 212, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 212. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill number 212 is perfected.
Bill number 213, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 213. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Bill number... Motion carries. Bill number 213 is perfected.
Bill number 214, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 214. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 214 is perfected.
Bill number 215, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 215. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 215 is perfected.
Bill number 216, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 216. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 216 is perfected.
Bill number 217, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Yes, thank you. Before I call for a motion on this bill, I would like to share some thoughts. I love my community. I love St. Louis County. For all of the heartache it can cause, it is my home, and it's where I've chosen to raise my sons. I know St. Louis Countyans to be some of the most generous and thoughtful people, hard workers, good neighbors, excellent friends. There's a lot we have to work on in St. Louis County, but the people who call St. Louis County home are one of our region's best and biggest assets. It's why I have been so, so deeply saddened by what I have seen over the past few weeks before the council. I've been brought to tears seeing people pack into our chambers, spouting dangerous falsehoods about masking and vaccines, whipped up into a froth believing that wearing a mask to protect fellow St. Louis Countyans from a deadly and disabling virus is tyranny. I've heard your fear outrage, and so have my children.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Striking to me is the focus on individual freedoms and no talk about what it means to live together as neighbors in a community, looking out for each other, and the need to sometimes make sacrifices because it's what's good for the whole and for those who are most vulnerable. I have to say, Louis County, I know. But what we're hearing in our chambers represents only one point of view. I continue to hear from hundreds of residents, so many that it's taken us a really long time to respond to the sunshine requests, so thank you for your patience. I've heard from hundreds of residents throughout all of St. Louis County who've shared their support for a masking order. They've also shared that they feel shut out from the discussion because they do not want to risk Covid exposure in our chambers, and I don't blame them. Our chambers aren't safe right now from a public health perspective. There are crowds, few masks, and lots of risks for exposure. So I want to make sure that those who voice support for the order know that I have heard them too. As one of the constituents who wrote to us so eloquently said, "Requiring folks to wear a mask is not an attack on freedom. In fact, doing this gets us closer to freedom from this pandemic once and for all." I recognize that this debate is not new, and I'm not here tonight to argue about past votes or political differences. But in their statements over the previous few weeks, my colleagues took issue with process, claiming that because the new masking order issued on July 26 was directed by the Department of Public Health and not through this council, that it went against a new state law. I'm going to leave what that new state law does or doesn't do to the lawyers to sort out. That's what they're doing right now. While we do all do the difficult job of governing during a pandemic, because from where I sit, the new state law gives this council the ability and the duty to take the lead in responding to this pandemic. So I'm here tonight to offer this council an opportunity to do that by introducing the masking order as an ordinance. Lives and livelihoods depend on what we do as a body to keep our community healthy and safe. As I've said before, I unequivocally support a mask order because healthcare and medical experts who are using science to guide them have told us that we needed to slow the spread of the highly transmissible Delta variant. As you know, Missouri is getting national attention because of the spread of this variant and our state's inaction. Just tonight, we each received a letter from over 200 licensed local medical doctors in support of this mandate. And, Madam Clerk, I would like you to enter that letter into the record for the Journal tonight. And several weeks ago, we heard from, I think, over 400 pediatricians in the community also supporting a masking order. I'm especially concerned right now about our children who are too young to get vaccinated. Even before our unvaccinated young people go back to in-person school, the number of children under 18 with Covid who are hospitalized right here in St. Louis has hovered around 20 for the past few weeks. That is unacceptable. It's also unacceptable to simply claim that young people do not often land in the hospital or die from this virus. Each week, we learn more about the long-term effects of Covid, including its potential impact on every organ system in the body and in the brain. The children of St. Louis County are at our mercy to protect them, and with tens of thousands of unvaccinated children going back to school in the next few weeks, we owe it to them to do everything we can to keep them healthy. I've heard from them and their parents that they want a return to in-person school. Many of our kids and parents need in-person school desperately. We've heard so many times from parents who are anguished over their children's mental health, and that mental health crisis is real and incredibly serious. But to get in-person school to work, we need to use proven mitigation measures, simple things that have already been proven to work, like masks. We must always protect all of our children. So tonight, I'm asking you to stand with me and with experts, like our public health officials, our region's Pandemic Task Force, and the Centers for Disease Control. I'm asking you to stand with our children who are likely to suffer long-term effects if they get Covid and long-term effects if their schools are again shut down because the virus is spreading uncontrolled. I stand for the health of each of you that are filling the chamber tonight, our council staff, and all of our constituents, young and old, who we need to protect from this illness. The country is watching us. Our constituents are watching us, and our children are watching us. Please join me, and let's take the lead in the fight against this virus and for the people we so proudly serve. So with that, I would like to make a motion to perfect Bill number 217.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question.
Madam Chair.
I'll yield to Councilwoman Dunaway.
Councilwoman Dunaway.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilman Tracus. This whole debate, especially the last couple of weeks, has really taken me back to the late 90s and early 2000s when smokers were demanding that their freedom to blow cancer smoke in the rest of our faces and bars and restaurants mattered more than the rest of our rights to not have cancer smoke blown in our faces. I've been watching the spectacle in front of us these past several weeks. I've been listening to both sides of this debate. I've watched as educators bring their hands, looking to us for guidance on reopening schools this fall as safely as possible so our children can be back in the classroom where they belong. But we're too busy playing politics to help solve real problems. So we were asked by Chairwoman Day's office today, "We don't need to hold the mask mandate vote tonight for a hearing on September 7?" We have death and disease in our community now that needs a response now. Further, we have plenty of information before us that shows Covid numbers are up in our community. Science, public health, medical professionals, doctors, critical care nurses, pediatricians, all saying the same thing: Mask up and get vaccinated to protect the community and end this pandemic. Just today, I looked at a Mayo Clinic map that showed that St. Louis County is hot with Covid. We have increasing number of children with Covid in the hospital and ICU here in St. Louis County, fighting off the Delta variant, which is proving to be more harmful to them than previous strains of the virus. In our hospitals, Covid and ICU beds are nearing capacity. We have low vaccination rates, as low as 30% of eligible people in large swaths of the county. We have six times the number of positive infections and hospitalizations compared to two months ago. And all of this can be seen at STLcorona.com, which has been up to date every day since the pandemic started. The numbers are there. The information is there. The science is there. We have seen that masks work. Doctors and medical professionals have shown time and again that masks work. While our masks don't protect us from the Covid around us, it protects others from the Covid we may be silently carrying. After all of this time in mitigation mode, wearing masks and social distancing, staying home to stem the spread of the disease, standing up for healthcare workers in our most vulnerable, here we are in the midst of another wave of disease and death, and this time, it is wholly preventable by vaccines, masks, and communities that care enough about each other to do the right thing. It's exhausting to see the light at the end of this tunnel only to be pulled back into yet another wave of disease and death in our community. I'm tired of masking up. I'm tired of keeping my distance. I'm tired of having to avoid places like the council chamber where I cannot trust that I won't be infected with a disease that can...
Excuse me. Excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, you have to be cordial. Please be respectful so that we can hear the debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I endure these inconveniences because I'm trying not to protect just myself and my family, but the whole of our community. The freedom that I grew up with, the liberty at the core of the values that I bring with me to this work is accompanied by a great sense of responsibility for my fellow citizens. By voting no on mask mandates, this council puts another type of freedom first, the freedom to cause harm to others. Today, as Councilwoman Clancy already mentioned, today this council received a letter from more than 200 doctors and members of the medical community reminding us of the sacrifices they continue making to fight our common enemy, this novel coronavirus, and urging us to reinstate a mask mandate to mitigate further spread of the virus. And I want to quote a part of the letter: "Without a mask mandate, our healthcare system is fighting a losing battle. And as we have seen with other places around the country, a return to in-person school will be harder to maintain. Without a mask mandate, hospitals will continue to be overwhelmed, and patients will suffer, and more people in our community will die needlessly." End quote. My constituents in the 2nd district have overwhelmingly sided with the advice of medical professionals, public health, science, and mask mandates. In the 2nd district, we're standing up for the people who can't yet be vaccinated, those who are immunocompromised and for which the vaccines do very little, those unwilling to risk their lives and the lives of their friends and family by showing up here to say so, and those on the front lines fighting this virus and saving lives. To and for my constituents and the greater St. Louis County community, I'm standing strong with you and speaking up for you, and I will vote tonight and again and again, as long as I have to, for a mask mandate that protects all of us from further disease and death. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Tracus? Our security is there for a reason, people. Councilman Tracus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no sound reason to proceed to perfect this legislation tonight. For starters, the Circuit Court is considering the validity of the Public Health Director's July 26, 2021 face covering order mandating that we all wear masks. And a hearing is scheduled this week, I believe, the day after tomorrow, Thursday, August 12, 2021. So certainly, it makes sense to wait for the court's decision. Also, as the chair has acknowledged, a committee of the whole is currently scheduled. It is absolutely reasonable to conduct the committee of the whole before moving forward on this bill. Moreover, the bill in its current form is fraught with problems, including questionable legality. As we've heard, we have every reason to question the efficacy of the masks Bill 217 requires residents to wear. In other words, will this bill and what it requires do any real good? In its current form, the answer is almost certainly no. The citizens of St. Louis County are sick and tired of government overreach, imposition, manipulation, and control of their lives. That's what this and other proposed mandates are really about: control and the maintenance of power. I don't know about the rest of you, but I do not believe I was sent here for that purpose. Let us take the time to... Let us take the time to conduct the committee of the whole, glean the facts, and dutifully consider the law before voting on this bill. Until we do so, my vote is and always will be no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fitch, you have to listen to Councilwoman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As written, Bill 217, specifically Section 7 of this proposed ordinance, authorizes the county counselor to seek civil relief, but the proposed ordinance makes no mention of criminal penalties or enforcement. But there is a state law addressing this, and it's 192.300. You can look it up, revised statutes of Missouri. So we have to look at its provisions to know the full impact of Councilwoman Clancy's bill. 192.300, revised statutes of Missouri, makes a violation of any county ordinance related to public health a misdemeanor and provides that violators shall be prosecuted, tried, and fined as otherwise provided by law. Now, Chapter 577.021, revised statutes of Missouri, Section 1, provides that any offense defined outside this code, which is declared to be a misdemeanor, without specification of the penalty therefore is a Class A misdemeanor. Thus, because there's an absence of specificity in 192.300 regarding type of misdemeanor, the default is a Class A misdemeanor, which is punishable by up to a $2,000 fine and one year in jail. That's what we have in front of us to debate, is, and she put some language in here about a civil penalty. This ordinance cannot supersede state law. That calls it a misdemeanor, a crime. Now, there's always discussion about where crimes, especially minor crimes like this, are enforced in our community. That's always part of the discussion and should be. So as long as there's anything like this out there, like Councilman Trakus stated, I will never be in favor of anything like this, certainly in favor of recommendations. But to say if you violate this ordinance, you could go to jail for up to a year and get up to a $2,000 fine, that's a nonstarter for me, Madam Chair. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If anyone has read this bill, and I have a number of times, I'm conflicted on a number of different things. The first section, it says all individuals age five and older are required to properly wear face coverings while indoor and enclosed public buildings. I'd like for Councilwoman Clancy to let me know, how do you keep a mask on a five-year-old? And what is the plan for that? And I'm serious.
Harder, I invite you to spend the day, yes, I invite students for school, for each wearing a mask, all of the kids.
You have a bad connection, Councilwoman Clancy. Okay. You have a bad connection there. We're having, we can't, we can't hear you. You're breaking up, and so I'm not sure if we want to move onto your next question, if you just have a statement.
Sure, no, I have next question. Also, under this Councilwoman Clancy, it says in Section 3, persons who have, these are the exceptions to this rule, persons who have trouble breathing or are unconscious, incapable, or otherwise unable to remove face covering without assistance. Is that a typo for people that are unconscious don't have to wear the mask?
Yeah, we're having difficulty with Councilwoman Clancy at the time.
And the last, the last thing I would like to ask Councilwoman Clancy is, in Section 9, it talks about a sunset to this law, and it talks about the ordinance shall sunset at such time as St. Louis County has attained both a vaccination rate of 70% and a moderate transmission level of the SARS-CoV-2 as defined by the CDC in Exhibit A here. And I was wondering if she would consider modifying this to also include natural immunity for those 100,000 people that have had COVID in the St. Louis area, roughly 10% of the population, which would put us fairly close to that saturation point if you add those two numbers together. And that natural immunity doesn't seem to be included in any of the documents in any of these mandates, and no exceptions have been made for that. So I was wondering if you would include that in that 70% going forward.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah, I believe my internet connection is back up. My apologies. I was trying to fix that, so I'm not sure that I was able to hear everything that Councilwoman Harder said. But to address the first piece, Councilwoman Harder, my son is almost five, so are many of his classmates. They never took the masks off. So I invite you to spend some time at his childcare center and see how kids are able to keep the masks on. Everything in that bill has been recommended by public health experts. So, you know, that's where I'm going to continue to get my data and information when crafting public policy related to the pandemic. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clancy, is the section that talks about unconscious people not having to wear a mask, is that a typo?
Councilwoman Harder, last week, I invited you to let me know if you had issues with this bill. We'll be voting on this bill tonight, and we can vote on yours next week if you'd like. Thank you.
You want to ask your next question?
That pretty much answers it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Chair. Councilwoman Webb.
Good evening, everyone. As we think about this mask mandate, and we have been listening to each other for three weeks, and from the very beginning, I distinguished what my concern was. My concern was not just a legal matter of who introduced the bill, or whether it was county executive overreach, or where it came through an ordinance through us. My concern was that it was just going to cause chaos, and I literally put in a statement that it's just going to put gasoline on a fire that was calming. For three weeks, chaos. No work towards the business of the county and the people of the county, and that is one of my greatest concerns. My other concern was that none of this, and I want you to hear me clear, none of this has gotten vaccination up in North County. And remember, North County was the ping pong that you all played with from the very beginning. It was all because you wanted to help the people in North County. And today, this mandate does nothing for North County. I'm going to be honest with you all, because again, one day you're going to cheer for me, and the next day you'll boo for me. My focus is always North County. My focus is to always make sure that they're safe. I hear you all, I listen to you all, and I've been respectful. I so hear the community. When I hear my Aunt Pop, husband, and son all went into for COVID, and she's the only one that came out, a woman lost two of her family members. We all can think about somebody that's lost, because some people think I'm cast iron, but I have a family too. So my Aunt Amalie is dead. My sister, who's diabetic, she's been with pneumonia in the hospital for several weeks, released to go to rehabilitation therapy. I have Aunt Vonda in Dallas, who was in, on the ventilation system for three months. So what I'm getting at, I know it's not a game. I know it's just not talk. I know it's just not a figment of our imagination. What I will not continue to sit here and allow is that we talk about making things better and no actions to actually do it. You may not agree with me with the vaccination, but the vaccination, what I have experienced, has kept people safe. I hear the community that says they're okay with a vaccination. So I respect you all, and I understand that. I also hear from other members of the community. I would like, Councilwoman Clancy, for you to be respectful, and just like I said, okay, I concur, we'll go to a committee of the whole, because we really need to talk through this and not just jump on the bandwagon. I hope that you would consider that and not rush to this decision, because nothing has been solved in these three weeks, everybody. Nothing has benefited to get people more vaccinated. Nothing has stopped the deaths that occur. And Christian Northeast, I talked to Mr. Rick Stevens, 26 people came in with COVID. 21 of those people were not vaccinated. Two of those people died. This is real, and what you're playing with is fire, and I won't allow it.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Webb. Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah, I want to address the point about the committee of the whole. With all due respect to Councilmembers Trakus and Webb, the committee of the whole that I had heard about possibly being scheduled is September 7th. That is four weeks from today. If y'all want to have a hearing about masking in four weeks, go for it. But why are we waiting? This isn't about jumping on a bandwagon or making hasty decisions. For 18 months, we have been hearing from experts in our community, around the country, and around the world about the merits of various interventions we need to be taking right now to spread from COVID. So this comes at a time when we need to buckle up again, and we need to step up for our community members. And I don't think we need to choose between vaccines and masks. We need both, both work. But again, four weeks for a hearing? How many more children will be hospitalized with COVID in those four weeks? Because we did not act now. Schools are going back now. Jurisdictions across the country are going back now. They're doing a mask mandate now. So we're going to vote on this bill up or down tonight. The public deserves to know right now, tonight, where each of us stands. And again, if you want to have a hearing to talk about masking, I'm all for it. But again, we're voting on this bill tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Trakus.
With all due respect to Councilwoman Clancy, I would remind her that there is a hearing scheduled in 36 hours at the Circuit Court concerning the director of public health's mask covering mandate. So I see no reason to proceed tonight, while the court may well answer the question in 36 hours. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fitch.
Just to add to what Councilman Trakus said, I think that's the entire reason why she wants to move this tonight. That's the entire reason. So if this would happen to pass tonight, there wouldn't be a discussion in court. So I believe that's the entire reason why she is insistent on passing this tonight, is so she can get it asked and answered for the court, and that's the purpose for that. So that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Councilwoman, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Fitch has given me way too credit, way too much credit. I didn't know there was a hearing in 36 hours, but I want to remind you, the hearing in 36 hours is about a public health order. That's very different than what's before us tonight. We're voting on an ordinance tonight. There is a difference. Thank you.
There's a difference, with all respect, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Trakus.
The difference is procedural versus substantive, Councilwoman Clancy. The simple fact of the matter is the mask mandate issued by Faisal Khan will accomplish the exact same purpose as your Bill 217. So the idea that somehow it's fundamentally different is a false narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right. It has been moved in second, I believe it was. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion fails. Councilwoman Fitch.
Madam Chair, there's one point, thank you, Madam Chair, that I wanted to bring out. For those of you that were here two weeks ago on the 27th of July, remember they said that there was a person that tested positive for COVID, a city resident that was here. I sent an email to the Department of Health this morning, because it's a full 14 days since that. Guess how many people contracted COVID from that individual? Zero. Okay, remember, you heard, you heard the word "superspreader"? You heard the word "superspreader"? You heard all of that. Nobody has been identified as contracting COVID from that individual, just so you know that, for the record.
Madam Chair.
Let me just say this, let me just say this. So, Councilwoman Clancy, although this motion failed, I think it is incumbent on you and this council to continue with the committee of the whole that has already been planned and to bring the people, it will be a resolution that I am proposing later on. But I think it's important that we have accurate information about what we're talking about here. And I think that a committee of the whole where we can ask questions, we have not been afforded that opportunity for two, almost two years now. We have not been afforded the opportunity to have a back-and-forth conversation with the health department, with the county executive, with anyone in authority to know how to do this. So I think that even though this, I would, I would hope and suggest that you would come to a committee of the whole prepared to make your case. Councilwoman Clancy.
Yes, and as I stated several times, I have no issue with the committee of the whole. I would, I would prefer that it happens sooner than four weeks, because as I said, we're playing with people's lives and livelihoods here. I did want to ask for a roll call vote, Madam Chair, on the vote that we just had. Can we do a roll call?
Madam, I think that we have already called that, and so a roll call is not in order to be put on. Madam Chair.
You can do, a roll call is at your discretion, Madam Chair. We could do it. You haven't denied one before.
Order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not believe, I'm fine with the committee of the whole on the question of whether mask mandates are appropriate, but I want the record to be clear, I do not believe that it's possible now to have a committee of the whole with respect to Bill Number 217, as it is no longer in existence.
Well. Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you. But I do know that we did couple that with Councilwoman Webb's bill, so we'll just talk about the whole thing at that time, if that's okay with you. Councilwoman Webb.
Madam Chair, that's what I was going to share as well, because I want to have a full discussion, and I want us to make sure that all the things that we say we want to do to save and protect the people, that we really do our due diligence to do that. And so I'm willing to work with whether or not 217 exists on September 7th or not, to have that discussion with all of my council members, to have their input, and to make sure that we come to a good resolution for everyone.
Thank you.
So I'll be more than happy to take on that charge.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on to Councilwoman Clancy.
One more point. I would like to again reiterate my request for a roll call vote. I don't believe that there has ever been a roll call vote request denied in my time on the council, and perhaps even further. I think our community deserves to know where every single person on this council stands on this issue this evening. Do not hide the voice vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Clancy. I have made that decision. Moving on to perfection, we'll continue on in perfection.
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 218, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number 218.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 218 is perfected.
Madam Chair, I would like to move to enact Rule 19 to suspend Rule 6 in order to advance Bill Number 219 to the perfection order of business.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are moving, and we have suspended the Rule Number 6, Rule Number 19 to Rule Number 6.
I move to perfect Bill Number 219.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill Number 219 is perfected.
I would also like to advance Bill 219 to final passage, order of business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please, and my screen is out, somebody. We need a roll call. Councilmember Trakus.
Aye.
Councilmember Day.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to advance Bill Number 219 to the final passage order of business, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to final passage, Bill Number 219 introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please read, uh, oh, we don't have to read it. So, go ahead. Final passage of Bill 219.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to finally pass Bill Number 219, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 219 is finally passed.
And you have to excuse me, I'm having difficulty with my screen here, trying to find out where I am. Moving on to final passage. Bill Number 320 introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill Number 320.
Bill Number 320 is held.
Bill Number 14 introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill Number 14.
Bill Number 14 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76 introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 76 is held.
Bill Number 203 introduced by Councilmember Daze. I don't have Bill 203 here.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 203. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 203, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 203 is finally passed.
Bill Number 204 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move to hold Bill Number 204. Bill Number 204 is held.
Bill Number 205 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 205. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 205, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 205 is finally passed.
Bill Number 206 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 206. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 206, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 206 is finally passed.
Bill Number 207 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 207. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 207, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill Number 207 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have six resolutions remaining this evening. Resolution Number 1 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas the county executive has recommended a transfer of funds from the emergency fund appropriation within the general fund to the miscellaneous offices' special projects budget, whereas the recommendation of the county executive is based upon the need for additional funding due to the unanticipated expenses related to illegal settlement with Lawrence Callanan. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the amount of $6,481,738 is hereby transferred from the emergency fund account 1010-9900-0000-0000-535710 and appropriated into the miscellaneous offices' special projects budget for support of payment of illegal settlement with Lawrence Callanan. Said funds to be appropriated as follows. $6,481,738 appropriated to account 1010-1300-1330-1331-525110.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 1. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no?
I did.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 2, there are four ayes and three noes.
Resolution Number 18?
I have Councilmember Fitch, Tracus, and Harder voted no.
Right.
Yes.
Talking about the number.
Yes, no, no, I'm talking about the resolution number. That resolution number 2.
I think it's Resolution Number 1.
What? Resolution Number 1 is, uh, is adopted.
Resolution Number 3 this evening introduced by Councilmember Daze.
Um, just the title, please.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing the offering for sale of taxable St. Louis Cardinals baseball, excuse me, St. Louis Cardinals ballpark project refunding bonds, St. Louis County, Missouri annual appropriation, Series 2021 of the Missouri Development Finance Board, and authorizing the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 3. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze, I do not have that in my electronic version, so I'm going to do Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 3, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries. Resolution Number 3 is adopted.
Excuse me. Resolution Number 4 this evening introduced by Councilmember Daze.
Please read the description.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing the offering for sale of the county's taxable special obligation refunding bonds, North Park Senior BTIF Project Series 2021D, and special obligation refunding bonds, North Park Senior BTIF Project Series 2021E, and authorizing the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 4. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 4, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries. Resolution Number 4 is adopted.
Resolution Number 5 this evening introduced by Councilmember Daze.
Please read the description.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing the offering for sale of special obligation bonds of St. Louis County, Missouri, and authorizing the execution of certain documents in connection therewith.
I move for the resolution, uh, adoption of Resolution Number 5. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 5, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number 5, motion carries. It is adopted.
Resolution Number 6 this evening introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, please read the description, Kevin.
Resolution, whereas COVID-19 is an infectious, contagious, communicable, and dangerous disease. Would you like me to continue?
Uh, yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. And whereas the first confirmed case of COVID-19 in St. Louis County was reported on March 7, 2020, and whereas a state of emergency was declared in St. Louis County on March 13, 2020, and has continued since then, and whereas transmission of COVID-19 in St. Louis County is increasing at a significant rate and includes vaccine breakthrough cases, and whereas on July 26, 2021, the Director of the St. Louis County Department of Public Health issued the quote, "St. Louis County Department of Public Health 2019 Novel Coronavirus Face Covering Order," end quote, the public health order, and whereas on July 27, 2021, the St. Louis County Council voted to terminate the public health order, and whereas a continually growing body of research supports that wearing a face covering substantially reduces transmission of COVID-19, and whereas St. Louis County has a concerning combination of low vaccination rates and high community transmission that make breakthrough cases, cases an increasing reality, and the disease is more transmissible, more likely to affect children, and driving an alarming increase in the number of hospitalizations. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council supports the St. Louis County Department of Public Health 2019 Novel Coronavirus COVID-19 Face Covering Order dated July 26, 2021 for the reasons set forth herein. Section 2, the Council further strongly encourages all residents of and visitors to St. Louis County who are over the age of five years to wear a face covering while in indoor and enclosed public buildings and spaces and on public transportation in St. Louis County, and to review and follow the policy regarding the use of face coverings contained in the quote, "St. Louis County Department of Public Health 2019 Novel Coronavirus COVID-19 Face Covering Order," end quote, dated July 26, 2021.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, let's try this again. Um, I move to adopt Resolution Number 6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Daze?
No.
Councilmember Webb? Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I need to correct my vote. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 6, there are five noes and two ayes.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman, um, yeah. So, just for clarification, and we've already been through the vote, but I looked at this resolution as we've already voted to go to the Committee of the Whole, we wrote it down on the last ordinance. So, again, I feel like that was just another state of confusion, and I just want the community, the public to know that we will discuss this at the Committee of the Whole, and, and during this resolution, to me was, I didn't see the purpose of it, so I just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you.
And our final resolution this evening, Madam Chair, Resolution Number 7 introduced by Councilmembers Daze, Webb, and Fitch.
Thank you very much. Kevin, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas it has been reported that COVID-19 cases are exponentially increasing in unvaccinated individuals, and whereas the United States Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, and the Director of the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases, NIAID, Dr. Anthony Fauci, have strongly recommended that in order to stem the spread of the pandemic and protect ourselves as well as others, all eligible individuals should get vaccinated, practice social distancing, avoid large indoor gatherings, and wear masks when possible in public. And now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council strongly recommends that all St. Louis County residents and visitors follow the CDC recommendations unless there is a medical or religious reason that inhibits them. Section 2, the County Council strongly encourages the county executive to convene a meeting with the members of the council with the appropriate licensed staff and reliable data, and be prepared to have an open and honest discussion regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and its implications for our residents.
Thank you very much. COVID has caused a great divide in our communities. It has caused a state of fear, panic, and paralysis. It is akin to intellectual and mental enslavement. The movement to vilify and intimidate human beings is what makes institutional racism so dangerous. I support wearing masks, and I support vaccination. The previous bill put forth this evening does nothing to increase vaccination rates in my community. There is no plan to help people understand or to become educated about the vaccine to decrease their hesitancy. Cultural incompetency is real and ever so present, as we note, the rate of African-American vaccinations stands at 24%. Now you want to criminalize people with the previous bill that we just defeated who do not wear masks by imprisonment or fines. 62% of the people at the Justice Center are there for low-level offenses, and they don't have the money to bond themselves out. Now you want African-Americans to be targeted and hunted down just like Mike Brown Jr. was in 2014. COVID has exacerbated other health outcomes in my community: cancer, autoimmune diseases, hypertension, diabetes, heart disease, all of which cannot be cured with a mask. According to the Health Department, the highest rate of vaccinations in children is the first and the fourth disease. Not so with adults. So, let's have the common sense to find out why that is the case. Let's be accountable. With this resolution, I call on the county executive to meet with us, all of us, at least once a quarter, so that we can engage in dialogue, not just about COVID, but about other issues affecting the citizens of this county. Although he and I meet once a week, I believe open and honest conversations are good for the whole. Our job is to serve our constituents. We can do that by working together, provide us with accurate and reliable information so that we can do our jobs more effectively and more efficiently. And so with that, I move for the adoption of resolution number seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
Thank you. Um, I would like to be able to support this resolution, but I cannot tonight. I cannot do so because I believe it is premature. Given the fact that we're scheduling committee of the whole, it's bill two twenty-eight, and I believe portions of this resolution ultimately will be used as a foundational argument for the passage of bill two-two-eight, which we haven't even considered at a committee of the whole. So for those, those reasons, Madam Chair, respectfully, we'll oppose this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Councilmember Trakus?
No.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
I'm sorry, aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number seven, there are six ayes and one no. Motion carries. Resolution number seven is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business, item number one. Please hold on the order of business and that will be the order. Item number two, Seventh District.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered. Item number three. Hold on the order of business and that will be the order. Item number four. Hold on the order of business and that will be the order. Item number five. Please hold on the order of business. The same motion will apply for item number six, and that will be the order. Item number seven, Sixth District.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered. Item number eight. Hold on the order of business and that will be the order. Moving on to new business this evening, Madam Chair, we have two prepared orders. Order number one, in the matter of communications from Greg Tater, Director of Procurement, and Jennifer Keating, Acting Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Order number one is adopted. And prepared order number two is in the matter of donation of pet food and hygiene products in support of the Division of Animal Care and Control.
I move for adoption of order number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number two is adopted. Any further business to come before the council or announcements? Councilman Fitch?
Madam Chair, just a question. Um, three months ago, next week, it'll be three months from, uh, next week, uh, the acting director of public health, Faisal Khan, said he would bring a transformational plan to us to overhaul the animal care and control shelter. Have you received anything from the Department of Health?
I have not at this time.
Okay, just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
I do know, I do know that Councilwoman Webb is planning a committee, and she might want to, um, expound on that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we will be having a committee on the first week of September, um, uh, that was made all available to discuss that.
If we had a chance to preview it?
No, sir, we have not received it at this time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any other things?
One final announcement, just an announcement.
Councilman Fitch?
So next week I will remote in because I will be in the great state of Florida on vacation. So I just wanted to announce that I will be remoting in next week.
Thank you. Any, any other business for the greater good, Councilwoman Webb?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So I have, uh, been organizing, um, door-to-door, not to get people vaccinated, but to give them information about getting vaccinated so they can make an informed decision. Uh, if you're interested in joining me, you can, uh, look up on our website, we'll be sending information out, uh, as soon as we get coordination with, uh, Christian Northeast Hospital with literature. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further business to come before the body?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion adjourned. Thank you.